The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Teaching and learning work session to order. First, we'll begin with roll call. Maloney?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Vanden Hoogle?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Sitnikow?
Here. It's incoming, so. I'm there. Entertaining a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, concerning employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren F, concerning financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where par Pren B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. To wit, staff investigations and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically to wit, lunchtime officers. The board will convene in open session at 6:00 PM pursuant to Wisconsin, to section 19.85, Pren 2, Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the work session agendas, which will include an open forum and reports from staff. The board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the work session meetings for such reasons and note noted in this posting pursuant to a proper motion. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanden Hoogle?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carried 7-0 will convene across the hall.
Pursuant to section 19.85, Pren 2, Wisconsin statutes to consider the balance of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
She said aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
He said aye.
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanden Hoogle?
Aye.
All right, we're reconvene back into open session. We took roll call when we first got here. I want to add that Andrew Becker is now present. Also, we are joined at the table by two intercity student council members, Luke Pazani, who's our president from Southwest, and Damaris Behena from Preble High School. Hi, Damaris. Did I say your name right? Okay. Also at the table is, to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and to my far left, Sandy Heller, who's our board secretary. I want to remind members of the public that you can view the board agenda and handouts as well as minutes from past meetings by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District" and then "Board of Education." On that left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Agenda Manager, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Also tonight, our board will provide our community with two different opportunities to speak before the board. The first opportunity is during our open forum. The second opportunity is during agenda items where indicated by public comment on our agenda. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meetings law prohibit the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public comment during agenda items as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. The process for speaking during our agenda items is as follows. The board will first hear the presentation and discuss the agenda item before calling on those who desire to speak. If you want to speak during a specific agenda item, please fill out a form and give it to the board secretary at any point during the meeting. If you desire to speak and haven't yet filled out a form, just indicate that to the board secretary and you can fill out a form afterwards. The board secretary will provide the names of those wishing to speak to the board member conducting that part of the meeting, and you will be called upon to speak at the appropriate time. Please keep your comments to five minutes, and I'd like to add that we had an agreement at our last board meeting that we are going to enforce the five-minute limit. And if your comments are longer than five minutes, you can feel free to submit written comments to the board. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. So at this point, I have one person who has indicated desire to speak, and I'll call forward Sarah Pamperman.
I'm Sarah Pamperman, 2397 Yolanda Circle, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54303. You all know me in my capacity as a bilingual educator. Today, I'm here on more of a personal matter. I understand you're going to be speaking, open enrollment, and different considerations for that process. I unfortunately am not a resident of Green Bay, and when we moved to the Green Bay school district, I thought that that would be okay because I would be able to open enroll my children. And last February, my son Benjamin was given an IEP goal for speech and language and was denied open enrollment to Green Bay public schools. Since then, he's received a diagnosis of autism, and he's been making huge amounts of growth at the center that he currently attends on the east side of Green Bay, very close to where I work at Edison Middle School. He will have two years there, a year and a half left, until he needs to enroll in 4K. And it is my dream that when he's able to attend schools, that he attends Green Bay public schools. It feels a little bit like a shot in the heart that he's not able to attend Green Bay schools because I put my heart and soul into my work here. And obviously, with all the love that I have for bilingual ed, would love for my kids to be a part of the bilingual program. It's been really hard for me to stomach the fact that if we want to attend Green Bay schools, we'd have to move. I looked at the data, and to be honest, it saddens me that with the data that we have in the agenda item, that already we're at capacity. And I know that special education teachers work five times more than the average human. And I know that we're already overworked and underpaid, and that special educators have definitely a certain skill set. And I guess I would argue that we need to be putting more money into more staff. I think that that's the answer here, instead of telling kids like my kid that he can't attend Green Bay schools when I'm desperate for him to do so. So that's all I have. But I hope that that'll be something that we consider so that he can be a proud Green Bay graduate someday.
Thank you, Sarah. No, he likes it up there. Is there, is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, then we'll move to our, to teaching and learning. That'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have four discussion items. The first will be the space availability for open enrollment. And is anyone besides Benjamin joining me?
Viki Byer and Melissa Theo Koller, along with Claudia Heinrichsen, are here tonight to speak to the slots that we have available.
Good evening. I'm just going to introduce tonight's topic and then turn it over to Viki and Claudia. As you've known from our previous meetings in January, the state law requires school districts to set spaces at, before January 31st if they are going to limit spots for open enrollment purposes in the district. As in previous years, as a reminder, you open enroll into a district, not into a school. And so because we have spots in our regular ed program throughout the district, it may not be at a particular school that a family may be requesting. We can find a spot for a student in a particular grade. We are not requesting the district and the school board to set spaces for our regular ed programs. Unfortunately, as we've been here many times over the years, the same cannot be said for our special education programs. And so based on the formula that the state has provided for setting spaces for those programs, Claudia and her team has put together the spaces that we have available in our special education programs for open enrollment purposes. So I can turn that now over to Claudia.
So, as you can see, we went through and we determined the caseloads. Our caseloads are also, include the service levels as well as the recommended caseloads. And when we went through it all, we have, excuse me, space at the crosscategorical for high schools, so that's basically students with learning disabilities. And we have a lot of space at the high school. We have 134 seats available. We're not, we're really, really overwhelmed in elementary and middle currently, having had to add additional staff in elementary twice already this year, all of which are now emergency certified teachers. We have one bilingual space open for speech, and we have one vision mobility space open for students with vision, visual impairments. Speech, again, as you know, is very hard to, we're not turning out as many speech pathologists as we need to in the state of Wisconsin, and therefore there's a speech shortage across the entire state, if not the entire region, and therefore it's very difficult to find speech paths also. Any questions? Oh, an emergency license means that a teacher who's got a bachelor's degree in some other area can be, get an emergency certification license for one year while they try to go through specific programs in order to get their licenses. Right now, we have tried to grow our own, and we have many of our PARAs, our Par professionals right now currently in programs and working as what we call Para on special assignment in a emergency license position.
Do, the speech and language, do they have an emergency license? No, you have to go through the whole master's program of speech and language pathology. So that's why it's even harder to fill those positions. That's what I thought. Thanks.
And those are all DPI requirements?
Yes. There are, there are things called speech and language assistance, but they too have to be under the guidance of a speech and language pathologist who would then have the ability to oversee them in their oversight. There's much that they cannot do.
Do we even have those in the state of Wisconsin?
Not currently.
So there's a shortage, okay, and there are requirements. And that creates a problem and a barrier for capacity building, right?
Correct.
So what, and if this is coming from the state level, what has the district or what could the district do to advocate for potential changes or anything that we could do to make that a little bit easier so that you don't need a master's degree and you don't need all, and not to say that, and this gets slippery, right, because we don't want to say that you don't, it's not, it's not a professional field, you don't need expertise. I mean, there, sometimes it's interesting, the state is removing some licensure, right? They're doing that. They have done that in some professional fields. But would it be possible that the school district, and is it happening that the school district can have some conversations about that? Because I don't see this problem getting any easier, and I don't see the issues disappearing. Am I wrong?
May I go first? I'm going to say just really broadly, it's a teacher shortage. We need to make it more attractive across the board. The hard to fill are really our special ed positions. So I think broadly, if we can make education more appealing for our young people, make choosing a career, by the way, you too, it's an awesome career. More specifically, I'll ask Claudia if she wants to add anything to that.
The Association, the Speech and Language Association would never approve it being lesser than it is currently. They've been adamantly opposed to that. They don't even like speech and language assistance, which we have sort of for occupational therapists and physical therapists, because it is very, what they do is very integral and it's very complicated. It's, and it takes a lot of training.
And I, and I'm hearing that, but what I'm wondering about is our school districts coming to them and letting them know what this looks like and how this translates to services for students or?
Obviously.
Come on. Or not have, or not having the availability to provide special ed for, for students. I'm just wondering, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm just wondering, at some point, they're going to have to think about doing things differently.
So I've been on the state superintendent's conference, or council for special education, and I did a term that ended, and when my term ended, Dara Attendari went on the committee and did a full term until the end of this year. So we've been working with Carolyn Stanford and Taylor, and we've made her aware. We've had public speakings about that at our state superintendent's conference. It's coming from many levels that, yes, we do need support.
And I'm going to ask Katie if you remember, and I don't know if you were around the delegate, there was a proposed resolution for the WASB delegation that talked about having, allowing speech and language assistance to be the only speech and language provider, because rural districts are having a heck of a time. And I think that was, that failed. Is that, do you?
That did fail. To my knowledge, I don't think the state of Wisconsin has speech and language assistance. So there wouldn't even be a pool of them to draw from.
But if it, if they're allowed to get emergency licenses, then there potentially would be a pool. But yeah, the school board association took this up, and essentially the delegate assembly voted it down. That was probably two-
That was two years ago.
Two years ago. And it's, I mean, it's, there's multiple variables to this. It's not black and white to just make it happen. And there was a lot of conversation about it, and it was not a slam dunk vote, as I recall. It was, it was one of those where it was a split vote.
Can I ask what the sticking point was, though? Like, why it didn't actually go through?
Some of it is quality of what you provide to students. And if you say you're providing speech and language pathology and you're doing it through an assistant, are you really providing the quality of speech and language therapy that, that you should be providing?
But now they're providing potentially nothing.
Well, they're, and they're, they're hiring speech and language pathologists from other districts that are traveling. They're doing it there in various ways, but it's, and part of it's a slippery slope. When you start down to a place like that and it suddenly becomes cheaper to hire assistants, then why would any district hire a speech and language pathologist? And so then the slippery slope of quality of care. So it's, it's a, I mean, that's why it was such a close vote at the, at the school board convention, because it's not a obvious, there's, there's not an obvious easy solution to this.
Well, and they also have to, I mean, COTA, Certified Occupational Therapy Assistance, and PT assistance have to be supervised by therapists. So you can't just have assistants providing, being the only service providers. They have to be, there has to be some supervision.
But that's all coming from regulations at the state level?
That's coming from? That's coming from those professions.
Yeah.
Which are licensed at the state level, right?
State and national.
Right, okay, so, but do you know what I'm saying? So what?
I know what you're saying, but I think they're also, part of the concern was whether or not the capacity would be there. I think it's, it's perfectly appropriate in many cases if there's, technically, a therapist has to do the evaluation, has to establish the IEP, has to establish the treatment plan, and then that can be carried out by an assistant. But again, the state of Wisconsin doesn't have speech pathology assistance. They don't even recognize that as a profession at this point. So even if WASV voted to, yeah, let's do it, there aren't any because the state doesn't recognize it.
The lobbying from our state school board association would have to be to make speech and language assistance an actual position.
Right. Because the students aren't going away. Right?
I know that Claudia, I don't know if this is just directly related to this conversation that you keep, so maybe you want to provide some expertise. I do want to share, there has been a significant, significant effort in every, every state organization that I'm familiar with that's addressed this problem publicly with the legislators. And I know that conversations, you've had them with Dr. Stanford Taylor, I personally had them with Mike Thompson, we've had them with a lot of people at the state department. I know there are outside agencies that provide this opportunity, speech language, at a very large price. Is that, that's my takeaway. Claudia, we get those all the time, and I forward them to Claudia. But the reality is, the resource to, to provide that service through a separate private agency is, is not something that's sustainable at this point.
The other thing we've been exploring that, I think it's called like telecommunication speech, so it would be speech through the computer or whatever. So the speech teacher would be over there and you'd be here, and you'd be able to do that. But when we've worked with all the different companies, it hasn't really been something that has worked out in our, for us at this time. So the other thing is, we currently do have a speech pathologist that is contracted, if I'm not mistaken, this year, so that we can make sure that we provide the appropriate amount of services. We need for our students with disabilities.
Can you clarify, so if you have a student coming from another district that has an IEP, they can, can they come into the district but just not receive services? They can't even come into the district?
They would need to revoke their special education rights.
And what does that look like? Like, what's that process?
So parents, when you take, when you have a student with an IEP that's identified as a student who needs special education services, the parent signs off that they agreed to those services. A revocation letter is the parent saying, I no longer want those services, even though my student is entitled to them.
And do you know how often we have that happen?
No. I know of two instances, but I don't want to say that I, that it's more than that or less than that. So I know of two instances.
I sat patiently and you got to my question. Thank you. No, that was exactly my point. I was, I was sitting here thinking, it's really about funding, right? I mean, you're talking about expanding the pipeline of teachers. How do we do that? You pay them better wages that commiserate with experience and all the education that is required, ongoing professional developments incredibly, especially for these very specialized skill sets that special education teachers need through all the facets of learning. But we're also talking about students who need more services, which means it's more costly to provide those services. So that was my question is, if, would it be possible, Claudia, and I'm not like trying to put a big project on your plate, because I know you have a, but is that possible for districts to be able to scope out services that have been denied because of closed space for special education open enrollment students? Is that like even data that exists, that you'd be able to say, we basically, it would have cost us this amount of money if we would have accepted all those students? Because wouldn't it then give you a good platform to go back to the state to say, to base, to be able to adequately educate special education students that are coming to us, we need this more funding?
So the answer would be yes, you could put that data together, but it would take an incredible amount of time because you have to, to look at every, every school district, every school board has to set their spaces. So then you would be able to tell based on those agendas and just as we post, what those spaces are and what the vote was to set those spaces. And then the applications that students make are in, it's OPAL, and I, it's an acronym, Katie, and I can't remember what it stands for, but it's the open enrollment online application process through the state of Wisconsin through the DPI. So every application goes through OPAL, and you have to check whether the student has an IEP or not. So you would be able to see, I, I don't know if you'd be able to identify by name, but every school district would be able to tell how many open enrollment applications they receive from students who have an IEP. And then based on, but, but, but when those applications come in, Claudia's department then has to request of the resident district what that identification is and what that IEP is, to then match up with, with the spaces that we have set. So it's a very time intensive process as we work through those open enrollment applications. And then, but we, we won't know, Christina, because it's no longer where you have to provide a cost estimate, except in high cost circumstances for those special ed needs. So now the state has one amount of transfers for students who are on an IEP. Unless they are a high cost student, there is a way now to request funds for those high cost students, but it's a very, very fact intensive, and there's a specific time period. And so, so that, again, that data is available, but it would be really, really difficult to get to the bottom of that. But there's a limited, it just goes back to, there's a limited pool of staff. And so even if, and then, and then it goes to our maintenance of effort, because as we increase that maintenance of effort with the feds, and we are not fully funded at that maintenance of effort, that continues to be an ongoing legacy obligation for our school district. Sure. So, so at, your maintenance of effort for special education is, if you spend a million dollars this year, you have to spend a million dollars next year?
At a local.
Out of your local, out of your local funds. You cannot decrease what you are locally spending from year to year. So if you are funded at 30% and you're spending the $700,000, you continue to have to pay that $700,000, that $700,000 whether you have the money or not. So that then takes out of your general fund, not out of your special ed fund, in order to continue to fund that, those amounts.
I think one of the things that people may not recognize also is that every school district has a responsibility to educate all children who are enrolled in their schools. So that's, that's a piece of this, of this. And then the other piece for us, when you talk about maintenance of effort, and Claudia, we talked about this earlier tonight, to make sure that as we look at our maintenance of effort and with the reimbursement rate to make sure that as we look at our maintenance of effort and with the reimbursement rate of thirty percent, we are talking about a transfer of upward of close to thirty five million from general fund. So we we're trying to make sure that it's sustainable and we provide the highest level of service to the children who are in our attendance area. And that that came up last year as well. That's that's something that knowing there's a shortage of of staff, knowing that we are at a place and space where we're wanting to make sure we have the highest quality in front of each and every child, that that factors in um to not only Green Bay thinking in school district slots, but other districts around that I believe they also have that same conversation.
So to put this what you just said, Melissa, to an example. So we we spend a million dollars and we decide to open up speech and language to everybody who wants to open enroll. It costs us a hundred fifty thousand more because we have to hire a couple, I don't know, whatever. Some more some more speech and language pathologists. So we spend that hundred fifty thousand this year. And then the people, the students decide to go back to their district and they don't need our services anymore. We have to spend that hundred fifty thousand dollars whether the students are here or not the following year. So we would then create a new program. We'd have extra special education teachers, whatever, whatever it is. Somehow we have to spend hundred fifty thousand dollars for eternity, even though the students aren't there anymore. So I mean, to me, that's the risk of opening the floodgates is that we 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 then lose um that defined population that lives within our attendance boundaries. And I get that it's it feels horribly unfair that just because your child has an IEP or doesn't have an IEP, you get treated differently. Um but under the under that just that maintenance of effort requirement to me makes it very risky to open special education um to open enrollment. Because then that then we have to pull that money out of our general ed fund every year. And we're and we're decreasing what we can provide to our regular ed programs.
Andrew then Eric.
Okay, so if uh if a district's let's take a step further, there is no provision for there being fewer students in a in a district or fewer identified students?
For maintenance of effort, you mean?
If half your if, okay, let's let's say it, let's say half of let's say your district population decreases by fifty percent because half of the district won a big jackpot. You are even nothing matters, nothing changes that?
Uh that that you're, yes, you can apply to if you have a significant uh addition or subtraction of special education students. You can. Significant, yes.
So what yeah, what's what's significant?
I don't know, because we lost um we're down thirty total students this year. And um we didn't get reduced any uh we didn't get any provision to reduce the um maintenance of effort. I can get that information to you at another time if you'd like.
Yes, for for me, this is about this is about doing the right thing, even if there's, you know, even if there's costs. And student, you know, I think if we first of all, hopefully if we're doing a good job when we have a family come in, uh and for extending to a family to come in and they're able to come in because we offer we offer the services their student needs if I'm would hope that we could keep them. And I think in most cases, we would probably keep them around for the duration. But um we're not talking about thousands of students who will who will come in. We don't have we don't have even a thousand regular ed students open and rolling in, I don't I don't think. I feel very strongly that the right thing to do is to let let kids in. I I wish that all school boards did the same thing, in essence, taking the pressure off of each other kind of. But they they don't and others not doing the right thing is not a reason for for me not to. And I'm just not, yeah, it might be hard to it might be hard to find five or eight or ten new staff if there's a flood of incoming people. But I I didn't say no to the families that wanted in last time and I'm not going to say no to them again. And I'm I'm not gonna, I don't intend to say that. I don't intend to say that ever. Um I could perhaps be I could perhaps be persuaded on one or two individual cases. I might be open to setting a number to I might be open to accepting a number rather than saying that I think we should just declare ourselves open. But um it's I I'm I'm embarrassed if I voted for it the first time, which I probably did, not fully understanding it. I didn't, I voted no all the times, as I did in sixteen seventeen. Okay, well, good, I'm not embarrassed, thanks, I voted no for I voted no for it every time. But it's, you know, and I I am not dismissing that it's it would be hard to find. We might have to give higher pay or whatever. We've already have certain high needs areas that we've had to adjust the pay. I I get it, but I'd I'd rather be the I'd rather be the model for doing the right thing as opposed to saving money on on this one.
Can I just ask a clear, could you tell me again how many teachers we currently have on emergency licenses?
All special ed?
All special ed?
I'm not able.
Could you get us that number, please?
Yes.
It sounds like your more recent hires have all been emergency licenses and that's good for one year.
So I remember um as a prospective board member sitting in the audience a year ago when this topic coming up and being really thankful that I didn't have to and now here I sit. Um the two sides to this issue. And I sit here and we have a perfect example. I look at Sarah Pamperin and say, sorry, one of your kids uh has an IEP, so we're not able to take them. But if your other child, uh if they don't have an IEP, yeah, they can come in. Or or perhaps Sarah's neighbor can open enroll, but Sarah's child can't. Um and that goes against everything that I stand for when it comes to youth development. That does not seem equitable at all. On the other hand, um I have talked to special ed teachers who uh right now, an idea of prep time for a special ed teacher is uh working at their desk while supervising kids on the computer. Um there's no bathroom breaks, there's no lunch, there that's what their caseloads look like. Um and then I think about the special education students in our district who were struggling to provide services to the kids that were required to provide services to. Um so on one hand, I I feel like Andrew, the right thing to do is to open it up. And on the other hand, I think to myself, I was elected to represent um the teachers and the students and the the taxpayers of the Green Bay school district. And that has to be my first um priority. In my heart of hearts, I want to help all kids. I don't care where they live, I care about all kids. Um but my responsibility as an elected official here is to first think about the students in Green Bay. Um I think the system is completely broken. I think it's terrible um that that we have to make this decision. Um I I would love to to see us elevate the conversation and make sure that people know that um that this is happening to families because it's discrimination, it is. And um I I it makes me sick to my stomach. But um I'm would be interested in having a conversation around how we elevate that so that people know the situation that we are in. Um but I couldn't look at um our special education teachers. I couldn't look at the families of our our current special education students whose kids are are maybe not receiving everything they could because we're already short um in thinking about uh the teachers who are working on emergency licenses. Um so I Andrew, I completely agree with you. And if if you're you're are gonna take that stance, I totally get it because again, I see both sides. But um I'm gonna put the the citizens and students uh that I was elected to represent first.
So if there's people who can't even go to the bathroom, the problem is that we're already short. It's not that we're not that the ones we have are the right number and they're too busy. So uh that's gotta get fixed. And if their prep time is supervising kids, that's not prep time. And this and this, by the way, you know, there things were a little bit more guaranteed before before some people shredded the contract after Act Ten and hoped that most of it would most of it would come back. And some of it did and some of it didn't. And apparently some hard guarantees about prep time and ability to be away uh maybe didn't find their way back into that that handbook magically somehow. So that that's a that's that's a problem that needs to, you know, that needs to get fixed. It's also, we we don't get no money if if someone comes in. We might get a bit less than it costs, but it's not like we're gonna have hundreds of high cost kids coming in and getting no, you know, no money for it. As far as emergency licenses, I yeah, that's a I I'd have my kid take for I'd have my kid go to a Green Bay school with one of their teachers being an emergency license any day of the week before many other districts. Cause I think we do a good job, we have a good overall program. And one that's um so I I I kinda see the I kinda see the writing on the wall here. But I'm, you know, if we were gonna do that, if we were gonna elevate the conversation and get, you know, rally the community around this, we could have done that over the the last year and we we didn't, you know, sent WASB resolution. If it, you know, is gonna be ignored by the legislature anyways, even if it if we did pass one. So it's just very, it's just very disappointing.
Okay, Eric, Christina, Michelle.
So two things. Um one, when it comes to special education teachers, oftentimes they're setting their own schedule, right? So they they've got the kids who are on their caseload and they're gonna do whatever it takes to, you know, to say, I can take a couple of kids on a computer. I can fit them in, they have big hearts and they're doing some of those. I don't think it's mandated where someone says, here's what I want you to do, at least that's.
They should even be allowing a situation where they can't get to the bathroom for crying out.
Right, right.
They should be stepping in.
So that being said, um going back to the influx. So if we were a district that said, yep, we're gonna open it up to everybody, I guarantee you that other school districts will go to teach parents and say, you know what? I I know we're in school district B, but if you open enrolled to the Green Bay school district, they'd be able to provide services for your kid much better than we could. They have more, they have a bigger budget, they've got more people. You should really consider opening roll if you want what's best for your student. And teach schools will push their special education students to the Green Bay school district. Um it not trying to serve them in their own local district. And I'm afraid that 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 they will be discriminated against in that fashion if we um were to do that. So just.
Is that legal?
Yes.
Well. No.
Uh my question was, is it legal?
Tony.
I I think if a school district says they have a better program, we can service you, but they they got a rock star program. I don't think that's illegal. That's just telling families that they may be able to get a Cadillac versus a Buick.
I I don't know if it happens for sure now, but I could definitely see it happening um with school districts and their ability to push kids someplace else.
We 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 had similar situation with um students that were counseled out of their district. So if you didn't um if you want to not be expelled, you can unenroll in our district and go to to Green Bay. And then we won't expel you. So we've had that happen too. So whether that's legal or not, it's not something a practice we do, but it's happened to us.
Okay, Christina then Michelle.
Thanks, I have a comment and a question. Um you're right, the state puts us in this position. And if there was equitable funding, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation. So I think we can all agree that the system is broken and it's terrible that we have to make this decision because there is enough money to fund what every kid needs. So I think we should all make sure that we agree on that. I have a question about um IEPs. If a student is open enrolled without an IEP, but then a few years later it's found out that they do have an IEP, are we then providing the IEP or are they, what's the process for that?
The school district can revoke open enrollment once a student is identified as having a disability. We have not done that um because I have sat at this table for multiple years and especially listened to Andrew, who is adamant and in my heart of hearts, I want to serve everybody too. But other districts have sent our kids back to us once they've been identified.
So to your knowledge, we've never done that?
We've never done that. I've because we didn't start setting seats until I was here. And I have never allowed a student to be sent back to their home district.
Okay, Michelle.
I think one of the really critical parts is to recognize that this is the first year as part of the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission that we even saw an increase in special ed reimbursement funding. Um we are looking at another increase this coming year. But the reality is, the reality is we are so far behind. So the collective impact and voice, I'm glad to hear that the board is interested in in stepping in and stepping up and meeting with legislators. This is a conversation that's much bigger than just just us. It has to be out there. Parents need to know, parents need to provide um input. If you went to the the joint finance committee, you saw a lot of families and a lot of people caring a lot about this important issue. The reality is every single child, to your point, Mr. Becker, every single child is deserving of a high quality education and should have choice. And there and the reality is when we start to look at having to balance a transfer of funding from general revenues to support the needs of children um in another area, then we're we're creating that balance and having to make decisions that you talk about, keep you up at night and make your stomach hurt. Those are the kinds of decisions um that we really are forced to make. And it's and it's not okay, it's just not okay. So we need to continue that conversation. The governor had a much larger proposal for reimbursement. We can do better, we can do better for our kids.
Rhonda then Andrew.
So we do this or we've done this, the board does this every year, right?
Just for the last, this is the third year. Prior to that, when a student opened enrolled, um they would get money back to the district. If it was higher than the average cost, you would cost estimate it out. And so there was not a set amount.
Can you?
We have set spaces since two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. The funding just looked different.
Can you walk me through the worst case scenario if we were to accept it? Because we do have this conversation every year. If we were to accept it this year, right? What's the worst case scenario?
I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Van den Hoofel said was that other school districts are setting their special ed spaces at zero. So while I agree with Andrew, it would not be thousands, I do believe that it would be a significant amount of of students who would who have significant needs, who have very high level needs that would apply for open enrollment. When you apply for open enrollment, so let's say we set spaces at at ten for a particular category. And let's say there's a hundred applications. We can't evaluate based on the significance of the needs. We can only evaluate based on whether they fit in that category. So we can't say we will take students one, seven, eight, so forth, because they have less needs than students two, five and six. We have to throw them in a lottery and then we pull them out based on how many spaces we have. So once we set those spaces, we we take based on on the lottery if there's too many students. We can't evaluate based on whether we um whether they have less needs than other needs. I do think we would get hundreds of applications. And I'm I'm gonna go back to what we said from the beginning, there is not the staff pool available. And we are already serving kids with emergency licensed teachers. And that is not best practice to serve kids with emergency licensed teachers.
So where are these students going then?
They're staying at their home schools, the resident schools.
And they're required to provide special education services at their resident their school?
Correct.
But we, okay, just I just want to understand. So we we wouldn't have to set one hundred spaces, we could set twenty spaces. So we don't have to refuse everyone, can or can we not do that?
So the state, the the document you have in front of you, the state has a formula for doing so. And it's based on your current caseload. and it's based on your current caseload, your current staffing, and then your capacity, which is the caseload times the staffing and then your projected enrollment. That a projected enrollment are the numbers that we roll up from the current students who are enrolled. It assumes those students stay here in the district. Because open enrollment is closed in most school districts for special ed, those numbers have stayed pretty consistent. So, we may lose one or two here and there. Claudia said we have lost 30 since last year, but that's been across all of these categories. So, it hasn't been in one particular category where we can say, we now have one teacher who can service this group of students because 30 kids from that particular category have left. So, if we were to adjust these numbers, Rhonda, the DPI is gonna say those aren't valid numbers because they're not based on legitimate formulas that you've used here. These are, this is the numbers we have available based on those formulas that the state says you need to use for open enrollment.
You're saying the, the state is, I don't get it. If, if we're saying we're willing to open spaces and are willing to take the consequences, which would be hiring people if people enrolled, the state would tell us you can't do that?
I believe if we were to allow for open enrollment for special education purposes, then we just don't set spaces. And then we will, would not have a limit because if we're going to set spaces, it needs to be based on a legitimate formula. And we are giving you the numbers of spaces we have available based on the legitimate numbers that we have rolled up, our staffing levels, and our projected enrollment. And if we are to adjust those numbers, then it's not based on those legitimate numbers that we have brought forward to you.
But, okay, so the state, you're saying the state would allow us to set infinity spaces, but not 10?
You, you have to base it on a formula and generally we've based it on the same formula every single year, um, to come out to these numbers. So, if we don't want to set up, if we don't wanna have a formula, then you just say that there's, you're gonna allow 10 in all of them. Um, we'd have to be able to justify why that, only 10 and not more than 10 and why not less than 10. And so, if you wanna do that, I could work with a board member and I'll bring that forward.
Call on myself, just, um, and this may be completely off the wall, but does the state ever allow you to take into consideration whether, to make exceptions for employees?
Employees is not one of the exceptions to the space allocations, only for charter schools, only for charter schools.
Any other? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward, thank you very much. The next item will be student searches policy 446. Melissa, I'm assuming you're coming back?
I am.
Okay.
Katie, is it okay if we do all three policies at once? That would be fine, it would be.
Um, student searches policy, searches of lockers, desks, and other storage bins policy, and use of canine units in search activities policy.
Thank you. We are bringing forward revisions to, um, policies 446, 446.1, and 446.2 for your consideration. Uh, as the memo to you indicated, um, to conduct searches in the schools of students, their belongings in areas in the school where students may store their belongings, a number of federal and state laws apply to those searches as well as court precedent. And, um, those considerations must be complied with in conducting searches of students and, um, searches of their belongings. Uh, students have a legitimate expectation of privacy in their persons and their possessions and searches of students may only be conducted on two bases, one where there's reasonable suspicion or if a student has consented to that search. Uh, the policies that you have in front of you, um, have not been updated for a while and, um, we think they can be better written to provide better clarity and transparency for our students, the community, and their parents as well as staff in, um, conducting those searches. So, we have, uh, taken a number of stakeholder input, um, in drafting these policies, looked at best practices, and provided further information in the policies to bring forward those revisions for you tonight.
Any questions or comments, Rhonda? And if you could. Take us to the section you're talking about.
So, my first question is general. So, you said there was, there was stakeholder input, who were those stakeholders?
Um, we spoke to our principals who conduct the searches, uh, because staff members cannot conduct searches, as well as, uh, the school resource officers who assist in those searches and, uh, the people services staff. Am I missing anyone? I don't think so.
Anyone from Equity? So, um, go to, everyone please go to the first, student search, searches policy 446, um, student search policy, adoption revision. Let me pull it up. So, look, in looking through this, I've, I've just, I have questions because I see some conflicts. I see a lot of ambiguous language and I just wanna understand which lane it's in. So, I see that it talks about students should have an expectation of privacy and personal security must be balanced. And this is, this is already, or this is in the current policy that's already in place, or language like that's already in place. So, my question is, when we talk about the searches that are possible or that can be done, they talk about the searches have to have a reasonable suspicion, okay? And I'm wondering what, and that seems to be, um, that seems to be something that has, has, you're, you're going into that a bit more. What is the definition of reasonable suspicion and how it relates to a search? What, what criteria has to be met for you to say that I have reasonable suspicion?
So, if you look at section 3A, 1, 2, 1 and 2, that is what constitutes reasonable suspicion.
That's 446? Okay. Okay, so, section, what did you say again?
446, section 3A, 1 and 2.
It's under implementation on page 1 of 4.
So, my question is, in, in some of the language, it says that students should have an expectation of privacy, but it actually says in implement, implementation 3A, it says students shall have no expectation of privacy regarding items placed in lockers, desks, or other storage areas. So, do they have an expectation or they, do they not?
Can, can you point me to the exact paragraph, Rhonda? I wanna make sure I.
So, under implementation in, in A.
Are you on policy 446?
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
So, it says reasonable suspicion to search. A student or his or her belongings may be searched if there is no reasonable, if there's reasonable suspicion for the search. Reasonable suspicion does not mean absolute certainty, rather refers to the sort of common sense conclusion about human behavior upon which practical people are entitled to rely. Reasonable suspicion exists in accordance with the following.
Yes, exactly, right. So, I'm wondering, I'm wondering what, how you, so reasonable suspicion would refer to the sort of common sense conclusion of human behavior upon which practical people are entitled to rely. Um, how do we know that? Because it's a hunch, really, to some degree, right? How do we know that that's actually being used without bias? How do we know that when it comes to a search?
Administrators go through training when they get their license on how to do this. I can speak from my own experience, um, typically it happens because I've been told by a student or a staff member that they have concerns about a student either in, being in possession of an illegal chemical or a weapon.
Okay, and so someone has alerted them to that? Is there a process in place? I'm just trying to understand because I think from what I, what I read and what is noted is that this has been revised to give better due process protections to students, correct? That's the goal? So, right. Um, but there seems to be, if you look at the, at the last policies, there's, there's not a lot of language in general. Now, there's a whole lot of language, but it tends to kind of get gray for me. So, I'm trying to understand when it refers to the common sense conclusion about human behavior, what kind of training and what is in place to ensure that? And what is the process about human, common sense, human behavior that allows for a search to happen?
So, when you go back to the cover menu, cover menu, cover memo, Rhonda, um, it referred you, that searches for kids are based on judicial precedent, based on federal law, state law. This language regarding reasonable suspicion has been decided upon the courts over a series of, um, court cases, including the most famous one is a TLO search as to whether you can search a, a student in school and what constitutes reasonable suspicion. And this is the language that the courts have said constitutes reasonable suspicion. So, they're saying you don't have to have absolute certainty that a student has drugs in their possession, but you can use your common sense such as the student, you, you can smell marijuana or the student is acting, um, in a manner to conceal what is in his or her pocket or a, um, student has, um, is going to the bathroom a number of times and meeting other students in the bathroom. It's all those common sense things, as Vicky said, you are trained, uh, in, in school as an administrator, but also that you gain over time as an administrator and recognizing what would be those reasonable inferences that you can draw where a search would be conducted in a way that it would reveal evidence of a violation of a law, board policy, or school rules, and that the search is only reasonably related to the objectives of that search and are not overly intrusive.
But there is case law out there that says that, um, that police officers actually ended up doing searches that they should've actually obtained a warrant and had probable cause. So, what I'm trying to understand is how this revision or, or I guess it, it's been noted as an, it's an improvement for due process protections. I'm trying to understand where does the student, if this is, if the point is to give the student more protection, then where, where is that happening in the policy language?
So, those cases that talk about a warrant and probable cause for police officers don't apply in a school setting because again, that is a completely different standard for search than the TLO standard for searching students in a school. So, that would be a, a completely separate analysis. A, a school district administrator does not need to obtain a warrant to search a student in the school setting.
And, but that's not what I'm saying. It, it was determined at some point that there were, was an officer who was in the posi, the role of an officer as an actual law enforcement member that actually had to, was shown that they had to actually obtain that. So, my question is still going back to, we have a lot of reasonable suspicion, we have a lot of language around determining, you know, and saying that, uh, students don't necessarily need to be concerned about their privacy because they should have no expectation of it. So, I'm wondering with kind, again, it's, it's a gray area of I smell something, I this. What is happening with the new policy to ensure that there are, as the recommendation says, from administration, that there are better due process protections in place?
I don't think the memo says that there's better due process protections in place. It's, talks about transparency and better, um, understanding from students and parents as to when a search is being conducted. We are, we're not changing our practice here, uh, other than there are some things that we did put in place that it, recommending that it should be a female searching a female, that it should be, uh, SROs searching a student when possible because SROs have much higher level training in searching. Those would be those due process protections, Rhonda, but we are not violating students' constitutional due process rights when we're searching students right now. And the reason I know that is because we haven't had a lawsuit, we haven't had a complaint, we haven't had a parent complaint, we had a, a student complaint, that we have violated students' constitutional rights in searching students.
So, I'm, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from. So, I read the administration recommendation. The revision to the policy set for clear standards and expectations for searches of students and their belongings. So, just that first sentence, clear standards and expectations. So, there is language in the policies that says that you actually have to obtain consent unequivocally, has to be clear. And then there's language that says we actually don't have to obtain, um, consent. So, that's confusing as well. So, can you address that first part of, of that, where consent would be allowed and who determines that it's not? And what do we do to let kids know that you actually do have to give consent? And in what situation would that actually apply?
So, you don't have to give consent. There's two, there's two ways you can search a student. One is a consent search. So, if you believe there's something on the, on the phone and you, um, don't want to argue with a student about whether you have reasonable suspicion, you can just ask the student to search the phone. And for that consent search to be valid, um, the policy goes through what needs to be in place for a consent search to be valid. But if you know, if you have reasonable suspicion that the student was taking pictures of other students in a locker room because three, um, students have come to you and said they saw the student taking pictures of a student in a locker room, you have reasonable suspicion to search the phone and you don't need the student to consent to your search of the phone because you have reasonable suspicion. Then those due process requirements and those protections for students outlined in paragraphs C and D and E with respect to prohibited searches will come in place to protect students and provide them with the level of, uh, protection and indignity in the process of those searches. Not, don't search kids in front of other kids. Don't search kids, um, and wi, with somebody who isn't a witness so that if there's an allegation that, uh, principal inappropriately searched the student, there's no witness to that search. Those protections are necessary and that is what we're talking about with respect to the revisions and why they've come forward.
So, uh, touching on that, on searching of when there's other students present, the new policy actually says that they generally should be conducted outside the presence of other student, students. Is there a reason why it doesn't say shall or will? Because it kind of sounds like a, it's very, again, very ambiguous.
Safety. If there's an, if there's an immediate threat, we would not, um, that would not be best practice to ensure that the student is brought to a different location if there's an immediate safety issue.
Is, Rhonda? Before, but I do wanna, is there any way to revise that language though, with that, what you just said? Because as it stated, that, it doesn't say that. And so, someone could actually take that and interpret that, what, however they wanted to. They should do it, but they don't have to in this context of safety.
So, C3 says, "A search prompted by reasonable suspicion that health and safety are immediately threatened will be conducted with as much speed and notice as may require to protect persons and property."
I have to be honest, I wish we would do the one at a time, I really do.
We're still on the first policy.
I, but is that possible to do that? It's just, I'm jumping around, so. I, I agree, I, I didn't say you were, I said I was. So, in the, the part of it where it says. So, in the part of it where it says students, search of student personal belongings, page three, is there a possibility of changing the should and adding that in there about safety in that part specifically?
Sure, we can add language unless necessitated by safety considerations. Do you see that, Sandy? Um, 1A, 1A.
Christina.
Thanks, I have a couple of questions, and I like the recommendation. In terms of student consent, how do we let students know what their rights are in terms of giving consent and when they do not need to give consent and that we can essentially search their belongings?
This information is included in the student handbook.
So, the principals go over that with students at the beginning of the year as part of their student handbook review, correct? Can you give a little bit more information, Melissa, about the consent versus not needing consent? Because that line feels really, I understand that there's no, it's not black and white, but I'm trying to wrap my brain around why somebody would ask for consent to search something if they didn't actually think that something was necessary to be searched? And so, why even ask for consent at that point? If I needed to search something, I would just go and say that I had, what's the term? Reasonable suspicion anyways.
I, I thought of the same question too, Christina, as we were drafting this policy. Why, why would their principals ask for consent? And, and we, so we talked about that with the principals who helped us with this policy, and they, they said it's really more about relationships, that we want to have those relationships with the students, and we don't want to tell them, hey, I can search this, and if you don't want me to, and if you're not willing to let me search it, I'm going to do it anyway. And so, I, so it's part of that relationship with the student. I would like to search your phone, would you give me the opportunity to search your phone? And the students, by and large, agree to allow the principal to search their phone.
Do you think that the students, this is speculation, but I'm just curious what your opinion is. Do you think the students understand the potential negative impact of allowing district personnel to search their belongings? Because they're students, right? I mean, they're, they're thinking, but they could be putting themselves at risk by giving consent.
I think that answer is as individual as a student is. I think some students are very savvy, and they're going to understand what it means to allow someone to search their phone. I think kids who have never had an issue before ever, who are not fully understanding what it means to say yes, will, will not understand that. So, I, I don't think there's an easy answer to that question.
Did you talk to parents about this at all? About consent for searches? No, I didn't hear that in your stakeholder. I was just, I would, it'd be interesting to know what parents would have to say about that, but if you didn't.
I think for safety reasons, our parents probably would support it.
Students with disabilities, did you all talk about how students with disabilities would give consent and how that would look? Because in here, it said, what was it, like verbal, clear, there were like three descriptives of what consent looks like? And if someone's not verbally able to give that, how would that look?
So, I, I think, and I.
Is Claudia still here?
I, I don't want to speak for Claudia, but I think it's wrong, one, to say that students with special needs can't consent, that they don't have the capacity to consent. Right, right. So, the Attorney General's handbook goes through that, that there are a number of considerations you need to make and whether a student has the capacity to consent. So, if a student is nonverbal and there is not a capacity for the student to consent, then there would not probably be valid consent, and so you'd have to conduct a search under the reasonable suspicion grounds for the, for the search.
If a student has disabilities and can't verbally give consent, do their parents, are their parents required to give consent? Or do they give up their ability to consent at all? Does that make any sense? If you don't know, you can get back to me, I'm just curious. Okay, sorry, I have just a few more, I'm sorry, I'll get through this. In section C, I'm sorry, 3, 4C, is that a, 3? Wait, where it talks about, no. I'm sorry, under search procedures.
Page two.
Yeah, so 3C4. My apologies. 3C4. Yeah, sorry about that. Melissa, where it says, "When conducting a search at the request of or in conjunction with a school official, the officer may comply with the same standards and procedures." Why, why not say will comply? Can you explain? Why, why wouldn't they be required to comply to the same standards and procedures at school officials?
Because it will be, it would be a higher standard for officers in conducting the search.
Okay, one more. When it talked about searches of students and the, a school official, as to this, as possible, now I'm in D. 1C, about the official being of the same gender. Consideration of our gender nonconforming, non-binary students. So, what would be the policy here for them? Something to consider and maybe some language to write in?
So, that's why I think it says to the extent possible.
I think to demonstrate inclusion, we might want to include a couple, a little bit of language there, just because we know that we do have students who aren't gender binary. That would be my recommendation. Yeah, thank you, that, that's it, I'm done.
So, you mentioned higher standard of officers to conduct searches. So, what, what do you mean by that, and can you explain that?
That goes to your comment, Rhonda, about needing probable cause and, or a warrant in those searches. Again, the TLO standard is lower because of the safety interest in searching students in a school, and that's, that was the case in front of the United States Supreme Court.
But you did mention earlier that in a school, you wouldn't actually need a warrant or probable cause. So, then why not make the language more consistent for officers and administration?
Because the officer is acting as a school official in conducting that search. They're not acting as a law enforcement officer, they're acting at the direction of the school official. And that's why they have to designate in the definition. If you look at the definitions on the first page, school official, it says, "School employees designated by the superintendent or school administration, school resource officer, and law enforcement officers at the request or in the cooperation with school authorities."
So, I understand then that we're grouping them in together with school, school authority. So, then why would, why would the language not apply to them as well?
It does apply to them, that's why they're allowed to conduct the search.
But may, they may, that, that was the word that Christina brought up, that they may. Christina? When you brought up the question about what the search is, that the officers may, may comply, but now we're talking about that they're actually still in the same, they're in the same authority as they're considered a school official. So, why are they then different in that context?
Are you saying that the, so the definition at the top of what constitutes a school official, right? So, at the top, that's basically saying that that term encapsulates all of those people, right? So, is your point that then if you're saying that they're all under the same definition, then pulling out, how do you pull out different? Is that, is that, is that correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm just trying to understand then why that would put them in a different category for that direction, just.
So, if you read section C4, the sentence, "When conducting a search at the request of or in conjunction with a school official, the officer may comply." It could say the officer can comply with the same standards and procedures as a school official in conducting the search. The reason that's in there is to note that the officer is acting as a school official, not as a law enforcement officer. So, those higher standards of probable cause or warrant search would not apply in the circumstance because they're acting as a school official.
And I understand, I'm just not sure why it wouldn't say will. Because can still seems like, well, you can, but you don't really have to. Can means there's a possibility. I, I'm trying to understand if they are, if they're not in their law enforcement position cap, then aren't they following everything in the same context? Right? But the language, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not reading that the language says that, which to me is ambiguous and opens up for all kinds of things, but I, unintended consequences that I would like to not see happen.
So, I think we're reading it differently. The, the language is written to allow that lower standard to apply to the officers, that you may use that lower standard. You're not required to use the higher standard applicable to a law enforcement officer in conducting a search.
Is there any way to then reframe that so that there is no confusion? Because I will tell you that I did have people who work with juveniles in the legal system reach out to me about this policy revision, and this was an issue that they brought up to me specifically.
Can you explain a little bit more about what the concern was?
The role of the officer in the searches and the need for probable cause warrant versus just reasonable suspicion. So, that was something that was brought forward. I didn't solicit that information, all I did was post that we were discussing it. They have access to it, it's a public domain, and that was something that was brought to my attention.
If I can just ask a clarifying question, is there ever a situation where the officer would not comply with the school standards? If they're asked to do the search by a school official, under the, the request of the school official, can they, they just do it that way? In which case, the will makes sense. Is there ever? If, you know, if they find something during the course of that search, then they go into officer mode? But they would still have to get a warrant if they went into officer mode, right? Well, probable cause.
But wouldn't probable cause need a warrant?
Can you turn your microphone on, Vicky?
Not if, if the search was a result of reasonable suspicion by the administrator.
And could it be clarified to say that the officer, when conducting a search at the request or conjunction with a school official, the officer will comply with the same standards and procedures as school officials in conducting a search? In the event, what was the word? Just cause? Probable cause is apparent, may then switch to a more, I don't know, extensive search or something?
Why don't we go back and look further at that language? I recognize the concern, and let's see what we can do rather than trying to draft right now.
Just trying to clarify.
Um, can I just respond again, just on behalf of their concern? It just, it's, it was, and I, and I agree. It seems just very, we're going to cover every base we can so that we know we have a right to get in there however we want to. So, I think, and I'm interested in personally, and I'm speaking for myself, I'd like to see language that's tight, that tightens it up, that narrows it down so that it's very clear that we are not just, because there is language in here that says we have the right without a warrant, without probable cause, without, and we can just kind of, without your consent. There's a lot of language in there that speaks to that. And so, can there be language that actually, because this, this is definitely not a student-centered policy at all. And if I wasn't sure, I wouldn't be, I'd be looking at it, I wasn't, wouldn't be sure I was looking at something that was considering kids. So, I think it's important that somehow we have language in there that is, makes it very clear that they have, they do have rights.
I think it's a combination of balancing the rights of the person being questioned and the rights of all the other students in the building. So, I think there's a, it's a fine line that needs to be, Andrew.
Okay, so, some, some outreach will be done to the parent committees and to students before we take a final vote, right?
So, I, I just want to clarify, you cannot just search kids to search kids. You have to have reasonable suspicion to search kids. You can search the property that you own, such as lockers or desks, without reasonable suspicion because that's your property and your, the district's property. And, and that's a separate policy that we haven't gotten to yet. But when we're talking about searching kids and searching their belongings and searching their backpacks, you have to have reasonable suspicion. And our administrators are not just searching kids to search kids. This is a student-centered policy in respect to, again, going to what Katie said, balancing student's safety needs along with students' constitutional rights. And, and this is, this policy is modeled after the Attorney General's Safe Schools Manual. It's modeled after the WASB model policy. It's modeled after several other school districts' policies with respect to the language and best practices to ensure that students' constitutional rights are not violated, but still balancing student's safety interests in the school. And that is why those search procedures are very detailed as to who should conduct the search, how it should be conducted, where it should be conducted, and what notice students should be given in conducting that search, including better clarity with respect to searching personal electronic communication devices because no language existed with respect to searching those devices. So, Andrew, your question on parent and student input, this is, this is what the law provides, and this is what the law, the law says. So, I, I recognize the importance of, of parents and students to understanding the policy, but with respect to the safety interests of our students and whether we would be conducting searches, we're going to follow constitutional law, we're going to follow students' rights. I'm not, I'm not sure what would be changed, Andrew, with respect to this policy for parents and students.
I don't, I don't know what they, I don't know what, if anything, they would be concerned about. They might look at it and think it's the, the best thing since sliced bread, I don't know. But here's, here's my other question, this, you'll, you're going to like this one even, even less than that. But, okay, here's, if, if we're balancing here, okay? So, we have reasonable suspicion is the source of common sense conclusion about human behavior upon which practical people are entitled to rely, okay? So, that's a really low standard. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty low, right? I mean, there's, it's, so, here's the question you're going to not like. What, what is something that could hypothetically, you would say was not a reasonable search? What, what did, what, when would, when would you be, when would you be able to tell someone your, your search was not? Well, it, it says, yeah.
I, I can answer that. I can answer your question on this one. So, violation of the acceptable use policy. A student was using a phone in a teacher's class at a time they were not allowed to be using the phone. There is no reason to search. in a teacher's class at a time they were not allowed to be using the phone. There is no reason to search that phone. So a teacher, or I'm sorry, an administrator would have no reasonable suspicion to search the phone because the policy violated was that they were using it when they weren't supposed to be using it. There'd be nothing on, on that phone that would substantiate that violation of the policy. So there would be no reasonable suspicion to search the phone.
I suppose the student could be, could be arguing that they didn't use the phone and then someone trying to, well, okay, but that, there's a situation where you don't need the search and they're guilty of violating the policy. I guess I'm talking about something. Okay, sure, if someone just having a phone out in a classroom where the teacher didn't permit it, just it being out, okay. Sure, but I, I'm talking about where, like, they find out someone did some minor infraction, but you say, yeah, but you didn't really have reasonable suspicion to do that. I mean, as.
Our administrators aren't conducting searches that they're not having reasonable suspicion. So I, I, you, I can't answer that particular question, Andrew, because it's not happening here.
But I'm not talking about any of our admin, I'm not necessarily, when we set policy, we're talking about, we're talking about worst-case scenarios. We're talking about, we're, we're talking about that rare 1% of, of bad apples that maybe come in and you don't know until, until you learn what you didn't know, right? So, yeah, to, it just, it sets it to, I, I just don't, it, it doesn't seem to me that there would be, an- any case that someone's gonna say, hey, a reasonable human would conclude that he was playing games on his phone because he was moving his thumbs really fast with his head down.
I'll give you an, I, I'll give you an example. Student is found to have had marijuana on, on them and pursuant to a valid search, pursuant to a reasonable suspicion search. Six months from now, you do not have reasonable suspicion to search that student for marijuana simply because they had it on their, on their person six months ago. There would not be reasonable suspicion to search that student. So an administrator saying, I'm gonna continuously search the student from now until perpetuity because the, and the student isn't consenting to that search, there would not be reasonable suspicion.
Okay, Michelle, then Christina.
I have to, I think we need to go back and look through all of this and, and look through the lens that we're hearing tonight in terms of where the concerns are, because the reality is, when I think about all of the searches that have taken place in my experience and all the searches that I know our administrators have been trained to do, this is a trained thing. This is, don't go alone. This is, watch the cameras first. I mean, there are so many things that our administrators do before they conduct a search that I, I think that has to be very clear as well as to what kind of training, and that's part of what this is, is the training that's already been done before a search is even conducted. The reality is there are circumstances sometimes where you have to move quickly, because when we talk about a student-centered environment, we also talk about staff. And we're, the, the, the safety and well-being of each and every person in that, in that school counts. And so how do we, how do we ensure that? And the reality is it goes right back to the professional development for the staff, the recognition that parents understand and the students. I mean, I would say that a family could easily say you had no probable cause or no reason to search. And there isn't a single administrator that couldn't tell you where that nexus was in that search. The reality is, information comes forward. We have a responsibility to check it out as administrators. And I think that that, that is a really important part of this work. So, you know, I think we can go back and look through that lens of the concern and see if there's any additional language. But I would, I would suggest that, that at this time we do that and at the same time recognize, again, this is for the safety and well-being of every student in, in the school and every staff member. And so making sure that, that while, while there could be an outlier circumstance or situation, you couldn't predict the reality is I, our administrators are well-trained to conduct these searches and they bring in the police when it's appropriate to do so as part of a search as a general rule.
So if I could just ask qualify, a clarifying question, Dr. Langenfeld, I just would like to know what, what that should look like. Because whether we have a policy that articulates a reasonable suspicion search and a consent search, that's the law. And so our administrators are permitted to conduct those searches. So go, I understand the concern about, you know, if this isn't in your general vernacular, you're, you're not going to understand the difference between a consent search and a reasonable suspicion search and why it matters and what that process looks like. So we can go back and, and discuss that, but at the end of the day, this is what is already happening and this is what the law already provides. So I'm not quite sure what that would look like.
If I could, I would suggest that there probably would be little, but I think it's just going through with a different lens than maybe has been looked to see if there's anything in there that might be a bias that we could address. That's all. And I'm not, I didn't see it, having run a building for many, many years and worked in partnership with our, our, our staff and administrators. The reality is there needs to be reasonable information that tells you, you need to look and then go from there. I mean, there have been times where a student, when you ask about consent, students often are very forthcoming and they've made a mistake and they'll tell you. Sometimes they'll even tell you before you even know that there's any kind of reason to search a child. So we've had that too, and I'm sure that still happens in our schools.
Christina.
Yeah, I just, I think just generally for me, as I was looking through this, and I think it's always really important to balance the intent. I don't think any administrator in this building intends to search a student when there isn't reasonable suspicion or probable cause or whatever word we're using. But I, at the same time, I think it's also important to recognize that we do have families in this community that don't feel trustworthy of the district and of giving permission to be searched, right? I mean, and we know that some of this is backed up at the state level by inequitable statistics of who is incarcerated and who gets caught up in the judicial, the, the, the judicial system. So it's just important to have a balance when we're talking about it, that to say it never happens, it, it may never happen from your lens, but there are families in here that, that may disagree with us. And so to your point, I think it's really important that we put that, we look at this through that lens, knowing that we're not necessarily going to be able to make everybody happy, but recognizing that there are people who aren't going to give consent, who don't want their children to give consent to look at their phone. I'll tell you right now, if my daughter has her phone at school, I don't know if I, it's a good point. I'm sitting here thinking, would I tell her that she can give consent to anyone at her school to look at her phone? I don't know that I would. I think I would say, you need to call me and then I'm gonna sit with you and then we're gonna do it together. And that's not because I don't trust you guys. It's because I have distrust of the system. And I just think that that's a really important piece that we remember is, this isn't a reflection of you or me or of any intent to be malicious, but rather there are families that we know are deeply impacted by this more so than others because of racism, because of oppression, and because of all the things that we know exist in our community. So I just wanted to sort of close with that because I think what you said is really important and we've gotta keep that the forefront. I know we do, but that's always gonna be the perspective that I have. So just wanted to share that.
So I'm going to the K nine search for forty-six two. Sure. Did anyone have anything else with, my questions were all kind of transferring for both. Go ahead. Thank you. So it states that K nine units might be used without prior notification to students and school personnel. And it does state that they actually could be looking in to a locker. K nine searches may include, but are not limited to, the exploratory sniffing of outside of lockers, vehicles parked on school property, any other areas of school property deemed appropriate by the superintendent of schools and learning. What other areas would be deemed appropriate by the superintendent of schools and learning?
An empty classroom, a stadium where there's going to be a sporting event, that's, that's. Auditorium that's empty.
Okay, and then, so it is possible that the K nine unit would come in and you would go to a locker and you would open up the locker and the K nine unit would, no?
The locker is closed and if the K nine hits on the locker when it's closed, then the locker can be opened to be searched. Just like if you are driving a vehicle and a K nine is called and the K nine hits on your vehicle, then there's probable cause. In that situation, here would be reasonable suspicion to, to search that locker.
Or the backpack.
Or the backpack inside the locker. If the K nine were to hit on that, that locker, then the contents in that locker can be searched.
And when the K nine hits on the locker, is that information all taken down? Is that something that, because the question that I've received, and I, and I agree, is that it talks about that someone's going to be there to take down the information, that is witnesses it, okay? Does the family have access to that information?
So as, if it's a student record, then yes, they have access to it. If it's a law enforcement record, then they would go through the process of requesting that as a law enforcement record. We would not have control over it if it was a law enforcement record.
Okay, so I just wanna be clear then. So the K nine unit comes in with black and whites or law enforcement. This is not something that's done. And what is the line that's crossed to determine whether or not it's the K nine unit or just an SRO and administrator searching? But when is that decision made and who makes that decision? And what's the reasonable suspicion have to look like for that decision to be made?
So the, the K nine has to be handled by a trained K nine officer. And that officer would determine if the K nine hit on the locker based on that officer's training and whether that dog then has created reasonable suspicion for the search of that locker. And then the search of that locker, because now there's reasonable suspicion, can be done by a school official.
Okay, but that's, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear with my question. My question is, when do you pick up the phone and call in the K nine unit?
Yep, sorry, I cut you off. There are two circumstances we would bring in K nine. The primary use of a K nine is as a deterrent. The second would be a reasonable suspicion. So if I suspect one of my students brought in a large amount of drugs, I would call in the K nine. The, and to answer your second question, Ms. Sitnikow, the principal makes that decision and then communicates with their executive director.
So the concern that I had received about that specifically, because, you know, these are people who are living the impact of these decisions that we create, make, create, adhere to, agree to, vote on. So the suspicion there's a large amount of drugs. There's already language and board policy, policy that says that school authority could actually go in there without a K nine unit. So when is the, when is the cavalry with the K nine unit coming in? Like what is the, the, the threshold for that purpose? Because I think that's an entirely different situation, because again, you're also, you're bringing in different levels of law enforcement for that. So that's an entirely different thing, right? So if you have a reasonable suspicion enough that someone has a large amount of drugs in the building, why would you choose then to take that and blow it up into this situation?
I'll use an example of when I called in the K nine unit. Students came in and reported it to me that they knew somebody brought it in, but we couldn't pinpoint where it was located. That's, that's the circumstances that, or at least in my experiences.
So it says under number two, it is implementation, Roman number, number three, under two, there is a belief that a random preventative K nine search will be beneficial to the ongoing drug prevention efforts of the district. What are the ongoing drug prevention efforts of the district currently?
Health education, third grade through twelfth grade. Our school social workers and counselors, people services in general are doing prevention work.
So to me, I hear that, that's its own thing. I, I'm trying to understand how, because it's in policy, it's in, it's written there, that the presence of a, of a K nine will be beneficial to the drug prevention efforts. Is it, what, I don't, because to me what that actually says is it will propel more potential criminal justice activity.
I, I can speak to, and one example that one principal gave me in a, a high school that they bring the dog in and they don't ask the handler to have the dog hit on any locker, but they know that based on activity from kids talking, they know that kids are, are bringing drugs to school. And I see Lucas nodding his head. Yeah, yeah, so if you wanna, go ahead.
As a student, I mean, I know that the drug dogs are around and why would I bring drugs knowing a drug dog is around? I'm not saying I would ever do that, but if a low-key student, if the drug dogs weren't even a threat in their mind, wouldn't have to worry because they're so low-key. But knowing the drug dogs could be a possibility, it brings a possibility of them getting caught. So then they won't do it.
So there's tips outside of school that there might be kids bringing drugs to school and then law enforcement, I wanna make sure that's not what you.
No, that's not what I said. Principals hear kids talk and hear kids rumors and, and the kids saying that, you know, certain kids are, are known to be drug dealers or certain kids are known to bring drugs to school, but there's no indication, there's no reasonable suspicion to search. So the, they're not searching lockers because there's no reasonable suspicion or they're not searching kids' backpacks. So they'll bring the, the drug dog in as a deterrent, just as Lucas said, so that kids are not bringing those drugs to school.
I'm extremely uncomfortable with that. Because if you're going off something that you just said wasn't reasonable suspicion and then you're bringing the dog in anyway, I, I don't know, I.
But you're bringing, there are principals who will bring the, the dog in and ask the handler not to have the dog hit so that it is the visual deterrent of the, of preventative and having the dog in the building preventing kids from bringing the drugs into school.
You have a lot more trust in, in law enforcement than I do.
Christina.
Uh, I'd like to ask the two ICSC. I know you can't speak for the entire student body, but when the canines are in the building, do you get a sense from the student body like how, if there any sort of feeling about that? Does that, I, I remember when I was a student teacher and, and it's, and an educator and the dogs, I would get nervous and I was the teacher. Just because it just made me feel uneasy. And I don't know if that resonates or if that feeling is sort of part of the student body or not.
I don't notice when it happens. Usually some kid sees fluffy when he's walking down the hallway. Usually some kid sees fluffy when he's walking down the hallway and then he'll tell one student and then it'll multiply. It doesn't really. I, at least you, in my case, I found out after the fact because they do it during class hours. So it wouldn't disturb the student population. At least that's been my experience.
I don't really see like those dogs, because that's like during like, we're like in class and we don't like see that happening. And like in my school, I go to Preble, like most of the students, like the majority of students, they don't really use their lockers. Like they're mostly like use their backpacks.
So you would say it doesn't disrupt learning or cause any unnecessary harm or agitation from the students from what you've observed? Okay. Thank you.
And that concludes our work session.
All right. Thanks, Katie. Next is organizational support work session and that'll be facilitated by Christina Shelton.
This is my first time.
Good luck.
Are you guys going to make fun of me like we did to Eric last week?
Of course.
They better.
You can take over if we're not doing a good job.
All right, all right.
I'll coach her.
Okay. You already do. You're good. Okay. So first up, business and finance discussion items of public comment. We have the energy conservation presentation. So we'll invite you all. Thanks for being patient.
I want to invite Mike Stengel, Executive Director for Facilities, to join us. And I'm not sure Seth Hoffmeister is here from Wisconsin Conservation Voters. And also Casey, are you going to be joining him as well? And I think we lost someone in the process. Mr. Dorf, Ned Dorf was here as well. This has been an ongoing conversation. I know several board members have engaged in this, in the discussion of conservation and improvements of the work and making sure that we have a better tomorrow for the kids today and the future. So I, I want to start with, we thought it would be appropriate for everyone to just get a sense of where we've been and then hear from both Seth and Casey around the work that they've been engaging in and how we can move forward and maybe be very proactive and a little cutting edge here in Green Bay. So Mike.
Okay. Thank you. So the Green Bay School District has put a lot of effort and resources in to energy conservation in the last, oh, 20-plus years. So what have we done? So just to begin with, an example is we decreased our natural gas usage by six hundred, six thousand, six hundred thousand therms. Now, what does that, you know, really mean? So when we put it into, you know, dollars and cents and so over the last 10 years, we reduced our gas costs by fifty, fifty-six percent, which comes out to about $665,000. Now, when we take into consideration the additional square footage that we've added, so in the last 10 years, we've added schools like Da Vinci, Manoke Hill, Frable, we've added on to our schools with the referendum. So we figure that our actual cost savings is closer to about $780,000 in gas costs. Back in 2007 and eight, our average square foot for gas costs was about 32 and a half cents a square foot. And we're spending about $1,261,000 of our budget on gas. 10 years later, in 2017 and 18, we had reduced our square foot cost to just under 15 cents a square foot and our budget is just under $600,000. This is at the same time as we added three schools and a lot of square footage to our district. We've done some similar in, with electricity, not quite as much, but in the last 10 years, we've reduced that by 11%, which comes to be over $1,854,000 kilowatts, which comes out to be about $204,000 a year in electrical costs. The Green Bay Public School District was selected as the 2017 Energy Efficient Excellence Award winner by Focus on Energy. And in the last five years, the pub, the school district has received $263,000 on Focus on Energy rebates. That has to do with when we purchase and when we renovate our buildings, we get equipment, boilers, air handlers, light fixtures that Focus on Energy provides us with rebates on. So how did we do it? Well, one of our projects that we've been working on for, before I even started here, is to install a digital energy management system in all of our schools. This year, we're completing our 44th building, which is out at the auxiliary services building. Back in 2003, we had eight buildings on it. 2012, we're up to 36 buildings. And like I said, when we get the auxiliary services building, we have all 44 buildings on our energy management system. So what does that mean? The upper picture is Jeremy Babcock, Babcock, Babcock. He is our energy technician that oversees our energy system. Comes in every morning and looks through all the schools to make sure that everything's at the proper heat, cooling properly. He's developed sequencing to optimize the energy usage of our buildings. We limit our peak electrical demand through the digital controls and also pre-cool our buildings. So for instance, in the summer, when we have summer school going, electrical rates for commercial use goes up during the day when the factories and everything have higher demands. So we'll pre-cool our buildings, say, starting at 3:00 AM. And then at 7:00 AM, when the electric rates go up, we'll reduce the, the usage and then circulate that cool air throughout the morning to get the most out of our electrical dollars. Also, we look at reducing our minimum air intake when the buildings aren't occupied. So for instance, here in the picture, when our commons are used for lunch hour, we're bringing in the required outside air, air exchanges. But when they're sitting empty during other periods of the day, our systems are programmed to turn that outside air, reduce that outside air, so that we're not heating air not necessary when the rooms aren't being occupied. So we work with the principals at each school to determine schedules on when rooms are occupied and when they are not occupied. Also, we have conserved electricity by fixture replacement upgrades and also controlling them with our management system. So all of our referendum projects that we have done in the last several years have all gone to new LED lighting. We put occupancy sensors in our classrooms so that if people leave the classrooms and forget to turn the lights off, after a few minutes, the lights will go off by themselves. We also control a lot of our light fixtures in public areas like the hallways and stuff through the energy management system. So that, for instance, at the high schools, during class periods, we lower the light level and just have lights on for passing. But then a minute before the, the passing period starts, all the lights go on and they stay on throughout the passing period until about a minute after the passing period ends. We've also added a lot of variable frequency drives. What these are is they allow us to run our pumps, our other drives, like our fans and things at a reduced rate. So if, if only a part of a building is being occupied, the pumps or fans don't have to be running at 100%. So we could throttle those down to 50% or 25%. So it's saving electricity by running those at the required need instead of at 100% all the time. Not only does it save energy, but it saves on the equipment life and gives us some more life out of that equipment because it's running at a lower speed. We've upgraded a lot of our boilers. There are old boilers. We've upgraded the controls on them. And over the years, we've changed out a lot of our steam boilers, which were a very high cost to operate. And as of now, we don't have any steam boilers left in the district. They're all hot water. And we've gone through and replaced numerous air dampers. Having air dampers that don't seal properly are just like having bad windows. You know, in the winter, you're pulling in a lot of cold air, summer, you're pulling in a lot of hot air. So we've gone through and make sure that the buildings are tired, are sealed well even at our, where we bring in our fresh air through our dampers. And then we're always scheduling performance and preventive maintenance. It's a continuous with all of our building engineers and facility techs. If you have dirty filters, it really reduces your energy efficiency of those units, making sure the belts are proper, everything's greased, oiled, running the best efficiency. We have our own technicians and they go around and continuously looking and doing pretty much interior energy audits. Last year in 2018, with Focus on Energy, did a review of all of our buildings, did a benchmark project for us and gave us a report back. We just received it a few months ago and most of our buildings came back very highly rated. Over the years, Focus on Energy has used Green Bay as kind of a role model for other schools with our energy usage. We've trained our building engineers and technicians on how to run their buildings efficiently. Just so happened that about two months ago, I received an email from our building engineer, Dave Trevor, over at West High School. And he gave us an example that in, for summer school of 2016, his July and August bills were $25,900, just under $26,000. He went through, pre-cooled his buildings, worked at running one chiller instead of two because the entire building wasn't being used really, worked with the system. And his 2018 electrical bill was just under $15,000. So just by better practice, without changing any comfort level, he has, he reduced his bill for over $11,000, just by proper use. We've tried to educate staff to, when you leave your classroom, to turn off your, turn off your lights. We have our energy policy out there, so we educate them on, you know, that we heat when it's up to 68 degrees, we cool when it's above 76. Those are our energy policies. We educate them on, you know, not using lamps and with incandescent bulbs to eliminate personal appliances, those types of things. Also in the, since 2014, when there was the revenue limit exemption for energy efficiency, we use that quite a bit. And then we started with a, at Aldo, with Da Vinci. And in 2014 and 15, we renovated that building with new windows, doors, LED lighting, low-flow fixtures and completely redid the HVAC system. And that was savings of about $8,000 annually. Then in 2015 and 16, we renovated Franklin and Washington Middle Schools with windows, doors, temperature controls and HVAC upgrading. The other thing we did at Washington and Franklin is we added air conditioning, which is actually an energy usage. But even with that, we still reduced the cost by $16,000 a year on the energy use of those two schools. We also used it, Lori? I'm not sure. Something, something came up on the screen. Okay. We also used it at, in 14, 15. In 16, we used it at Frable School, Aldo Leopold and Edison, again for windows, LED lighting, HVAC upgrades with an annual savings there of $19,000. And then the final year that we used it before they eliminated it was in 2018, we used it at Webster, Eisenhower and Wilder for lighting and HVAC upgrades. And again, we added air conditioning at Webster and completed air conditioning at Eisenhower to make sure that all of our schools were under air conditioning. So not only were we saving energy, but we were also increasing the comfort level in our schools. So back several years ago, when we had some hot Septembers, we had schools, for instance, before we had an air conditioning tank, that in September, those rooms got up to 80, 85 degrees and it was very difficult for teachers to teach and students to learn when the rooms got so hot. So right now, all of our schools, even with all the energy savings, are now completely all air conditioned. And we're not finished either. We're continuing to work with Focus on Energy and our internal staff to identify additional areas. We know that we have more boilers, a lot of lighting to replace, and we're continuing to look at ways to do projects. We have projects that, as we speak now, as our electrician is having to replace a light fixture, as we look at LED lighting, we're continuing to refine our energy management system. So each of these practices, they have saved energy, they have saved natural resources, they've cut down on pollution, they've saved dollars, and they'll save in the future. These are not annual costs, these are costs that will be saved every year. So that's pretty, just a recap of what we've done to try to reduce energy throughout the district. So I'll turn it over to you, Seth.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Mike, and thank you for having us here tonight. I don't know about you all, but it was my first day back at work after a couple of weeks off. So I spent the morning figuring out what my job was and the afternoon figuring out what I wanted to say to you all tonight. So really thankful to be here. My name is Seth Hoffmeister. I'm the organizing and political director with Wisconsin Conservation Voters. I live here in Green Bay and I'm also the chair of the City of Green Bay Sustainability Commission. I don't need to belabor the urgency of climate change. In the last year, we saw a report from the International Panel on Climate Change that said that we have then 12, now 11 years to address climate change. We saw the current administration's Environmental Protection Agency coming out with a similar report. The Department of Defense lists climate change as one of the most crucial threats to our international geopolitical stability. And we've known about this for a while. In 2019, we saw youth all across the country and all across the world rising up and saying that we need to finally address climate change. Because we're already living in the age of climate change. We've probably seen the pictures of Australia and the heart-wrenching pictures of koalas burning, but I also think about Astor East River, the neighborhood I live in, and all the houses that are flooded and the recurring rain events that are getting more and more severe and more and more unpredictable and all the times that I have to shovel when it snows more and more later and later in the year. Unfortunately, the scope of the problem isn't being matched by our international community, by our federal government and until, well, not quite even yet, by our state government. This threat is only getting worse and worse and the time for action was yesterday. But the good news, it's not all doom and gloom, is in that leadership vacuum, we've seen folks in local communities all across the country and all across Wisconsin step up and, and take matters into their own hands. In Wisconsin in particular, in the last two, three years, we've seen just incredible leadership all across the state at the local level to address climate change and to mitigate it by investing in clean energy. Madison became, the city of Madison became the first community in 2017 to commit to 100% clean energy. Madison became the, the city of Madison became the first community in 2017 to commit to 100% clean energy. By 2050, we saw Eau Claire make a similar commitment in early 2018. And we've seen a number of communities across the state, La Crosse, Middleton, Manona, I can't read my own handwriting, Eau Claire Counties, Dane Counties make similar commitments. And Milwaukee just recently started a climate change and equity task force that began meeting last year. And just today, actually, we saw news that the city of River Falls is transitioning all of their municipal electricity to 100% renewable resources. They're not pledging to do it, they are doing it. We were inspired similarly in Green Bay a few years ago when Wisconsin Conservation Voters, the group Joshua, and folks all across the community were really frustrated by that inaction at the state and federal and international level. And we decided, why can't we do that in Green Bay here? So we worked with the city to create a sustainability commission, which started meeting a little bit more than a year ago. And when we started meeting, we realized that one of the most important things that we could do was to address clean energy and the effects of climate change at the local level. In the last year, we're really proud to have developed a clean energy work plan that makes a similar commitment, 100% clean energy by 2050, which council approved and our new mayor, Eric Genrick, also signed on to on his third day in office. We're making steps in the right direction at the city level. Like Mike said, benchmarking is a really important first thing to do. We are working on that as well. We're really looking forward to a full-time coordinator of city resilience position to start with the city staff, hopefully in the next couple of months here, to deal with not only the flooding problems that climate change brings, but the mitigation side to figure out how we can be more energy efficient, use more clean energy and all of that. And when I think about success stories all across the state and all across the country, it's really because there's been a regional approach. And we're also seeing a number of other partnerships in northeast Wisconsin. We've seen the Oneida Nation make a commitment to the Paris Accords. We're seeing Brown County doing energy audits and replacing all their LED light bulbs. DePere just started a sustainability commission. And Ned Dorff, who was here earlier tonight, was going to talk about some of the great work that's happening at Aldo Leopold Elementary School to get solar capacity installed there. You should definitely talk to Ned about that as he's been really taking the lead and has a lot more insight on all of that. But what he wanted to say is that even though there's tons of interest from parents and from the community and there's some grants, grant opportunities and some loan opportunities, trying to do it alone or in a silo is not enough. But again, the movement across the local governments is growing. In 2019, we saw school districts in Wisconsin make commitments to 100% clean energy. First, the city of Madison Metropolitan School District made 100% commitment by 2040. And shortly thereafter, the Eau Claire Area School District, where I went to school, made 100% commitment by 2050. We're also seeing places like UW Stevens Point, my alma mater, Go Pointers, already having transitioned to 100% clean energy through a variety of means. So the good news is the resources are out there, the interest is there. And as regional partners collaborate, we can really get there. So why are we here tonight? What, what is this all leading up to? We're here tonight to ask the Green Bay Area Public School District to make 100% commitment to clean energy by 2050 or earlier. I'm of the opinion that it should be 2030, as that's what the science suggests with the reports from the IPCC, from the US EPA, et cetera, but that's all up to you. What's important about a commitment like this is that we set a goal and we, we set the vision to attain it. If we make 100% commitment, do we need to have all of the questions answered? Do we need to have all the checks written? Do we have to have all the funds ready? No, we don't, because it's going to be too late by the time we figure all of that out. But by setting that goal and figuring out how you can leverage your existing resources, we can take those first steps to get there. And we can partner with the city of Green Bay, with the county, with neighboring municipalities, with the Oneida Nation to make this the decade that we finally take climate change seriously. Because if we wait until January 6th, the next decade, it's going to be too late. So looking forward to answering any questions that you might have about what this would entail, resources we could provide. And I want to kick it over to my associate, Casey Hicks here.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. A lot of you have already met with me or know me in some capacity, either through Wisconsin Conservation Voters or Chief Brown County. So it's nice to see you all again in the new year. And I just want to start off by saying right away that you're really lucky as a school district to have Mike as a facilities director. And it's really cool to see all the work that you've done already, Mike, to cut back on the district's energy usage and save money and pollute less. So that's all really exciting. Basically, what I just wanted to do was just kind of walk you through what a resolution might possibly look like, along with giving an example of what high school is already doing, our school district is already doing to try to achieve a closer percentage to 100% of clean energy. So all of you should have the resolutions from Eau Claire and Madison in front of you already. And just as you're considering creating your own resolution and taking in input from other people and deciding what should actually be in it, you'll see that a lot of the structure in both of them is pretty similar. They mirror each other in a lot of ways. And a lot of their whereas statements, just simply, you know, listing out their values and the reasons why, mentioning the regions, just like Seth had mentioned, in Eau Claire, Eau Claire County. The city of Eau Claire had committed to 100% clean energy. That was the impetus for the school board to do the same thing. Madison, very similar. You've had a ton of communities in Dane County, including Dane County itself, made commitments to 100% clean energy by 2050 or in some cases earlier. So they referenced that, referenced a lot of their values. And then, of course, you actually have the therefore be resolved statements in there that are actually creating these actionable items and these directives for the school district, the goals themselves. And, you know, that's where the fun comes in, I think, where there's the autonomy for you as a district to figure out exactly how would you reach that 100% clean energy goal? When would you reach it by? Some of these resolutions actually list out the certain years and percentages. 50% by 2030, 75% by 2040, 100% by 2050. That's just kind of, I think, the floor. And you could go much, much higher than that if you wanted to as a district, especially with how much you've done already, you're on the right track. Implementing things into your comprehensive plan as a district or coming up with a clean energy or energy conservation sustainability plan separately on its own, creating an actual committee with staff, with community members, students, subject matter experts, or just even devoting more staff time, possibly even hiring on staff if you are able to do it in the future to dedicate their full-time capacity to this endeavor. So that's, again, all up to you as a school district, as a board. I think that there's many right ways to get to 100% clean energy. So it's really just whatever works better for you as a district in this area. I did want to provide just one example of two different avenues that you could pursue, just from an energy procurement avenue. My old high school, old school district, Random Lake, they haven't committed to 100% clean energy, but they were strongly considering this year, how can we make sure that the energy that we are sourcing is coming from clean sources and we're not adding any more CO2 into the atmosphere and contributing to climate change? And of course, there's also the energy savings that come into it. They looked at two different ways to go about doing it. The first way they, they looked at it was actually outright purchasing solar panels and placing them onto their roofs. There's, of course, an upfront cost with that, but what they saw was a pretty high annual savings for their building of about $45,000 annually, once it kind of reached its peak. Of course, with the upfront costs, at first, you know, they have to ramp up a little bit, but that's going to continue into the future. They also examined a leasing option with Wisconsin, or sorry, with WEC Energies. WEC Energy is the parent company of Wisconsin Public Service and WEC Energies. So if I mix them up, I'm sorry about that. But, so they had done that too. They looked at that, found out that they could save about $32,000 annually in their energy costs. And there was no upfront cost, no maintenance costs. And so eventually, that's what they ended up going with. So they were actually paid by WPS to lease out their roof space for solar panels on it. So I'm not saying the school district should go with either one. That's a decision that you all have to make and in consultation with Mike and with facilities. But just to show you how it can be done and just what some of those savings might look like annually. And that's just for one building. Random Lake is a very small town and a very small school district. My graduating class was only 88 people. So if you take those savings and you multiply them by how many schools are actually within the Green Bay School District, it's obviously much, much higher than that. And, you know, lastly, the thing that I just wanted to make an appeal to is the values that the school district holds and embodies through the work that I did at Achieve Brown County as a continuous improvement coordinator, before coming to Wisconsin Conservation Voters and working with teachers in an academic career planning sense and mentoring sense. This school district cares very deeply about their students, as all of you do. And parents are incredibly involved. And at the end of the day, the reason to go about doing this is because it's best for your students. It's money that's saved that can be placed into programs and services that are going to better your students. It's money that's saved that can go towards staff. And so you not only have the money aspect, you also have values in lessening your CO2 emissions, air pollution that you're putting in, into the air, affecting, you know, the health of students. And as well, I worked on academic career planning when I was with Achieve Brown County. I see it also in the lens of this is a great career-building opportunity for students too, to actually see how these things have worked in my old school district, Random Lake, has already thought about how are we going to end up actually integrating our solar panels into our tech ed curriculum? So again, I would just reiterate the ask that Seth made, that we would ask the school district to make the commitment to 100% clean energy by at least 2050. And that's all I have, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Although Laura, oh, I'm in control now. I like this. I'm going to go Laura and then Eric.
First of all, I just want to say that I'm incredibly proud of the progress that our district has already made in this area. And Mike, you're to be congratulated. I'm sure that school boards that were making these decisions long before I was here had many conversations about how to do this and how to spend resources and how to spend taxpayer dollars to become more efficient. And I'm sure that took enormous amount of effort and planning. And I really appreciated your, you know, the, what you showed us tonight. I, I didn't have a good feeling about what has happened. I mean, I didn't have a thorough knowledge. And I feel like I have a better handle on kind of the history of our district and all that progress. So I just want to congratulate you, Mike, and, and those past school boards that made those decisions and your crew and your, and your team. So it's been a pleasure to get to know you two. And Brendan and I have been in some meetings with you and we've met and we've, I've gotten to know you a bit. And it's been really great to have you as a resource. Because honestly, I, I know, going in, I knew very little about this subject. But I feel like our board, I don't want to speak for our board, I'll just speak for myself. I, this, I feel like this is really important. And I am ready to take the progress that Mike and his crew have made in our district and take it to the next level. I feel an urgency, I think we all do, and I'm ready to do that. Our city has new leadership and they're committed as well. I had a conversation today with, I met with Celestine Jeffries and she talked a little bit about that. The resilience, resiliency, I'm not sure what the title is, but they're pretty excited about it. Let's put it that way. There's a change of tone in our leadership in this city and there's a commitment going forward. And I feel like our city, our community and our district, together, can make this happen. The details, I mean, it's complicated, the commitment is huge. But I'm, I personally am ready to go there. You know, I have a couple of questions that are more specific, but I think I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Eric?
You're doing great, by the way. When you say commitment to clean energy, tell me what that means. What, what types of energy are we talking about? And what are, I mean, you mentioned solar panels. Is that wind energy? What else might that include? What does that look like when you ask us to commit to that?
So clean energy is a very broad term. So if we were talking about, the difference between clean energy and renewable energy exists, it's very nuanced. So if we were talking about renewable energy, those would be things that come from completely renewable resources, the sun, geothermal, wind. Clean energy is a little bit more broad. It can, under some definitions, include natural gas, if I'm not mistaken, nuclear energy, but basically any energy that doesn't produce carbon. Yeah.
Question from Mike. How, how close are we or what, what, I mean, if you had to say one is no, none at all and they want us to get to 100%, where are we on that spectrum?
I guess I'm, I'm trying to get what your question asks. 100% of getting all of our buildings as high efficient as we can get them? I think we have a long ways to go yet. We've, we've done a lot, but there's a lot more to do. And technology keeps changing. So we can, it's, I think it's going to be a continuous project. Because five years ago, we would never put in LED lighting because the cost was too high. Now the cost has come down so much that putting LED lighting is a no-brainer. That, that's just a common thing we're doing now. So we'll, we'll be seeing other things coming down in cost. Same thing with solar panels. Those types of things are coming down in cost that are making them more reasonable to do than years ago when we wouldn't even consider doing them.
Brenda?
So if I understand this correctly, the clean energy, renewable energy commitment is the source of your power. And then there's the other part, which we've done a lot of work with, is reducing our power needs. So the two of them kind of work together. The more we can reduce our energy use, the fewer things we have to put in place, like solar panels or wind or whatever we decide in terms of producing our power. But you said that there's also a natural gas component to that. But I'm, so I'm, I'm thinking that if I'm understanding it correctly, we probably, other than Aldo, doing solar power, are still using energy that would not be considered clean energy, correct?
Yes, definitely. Anything, like you plug the outlet in, if it's coming from WPS, I, I think it's in like the 11 to 13% range would be non-carbon sources of electricity and the rest is.
It's still, okay.
It's still carbon-based.
And then, in mind's more specific question. And so as I understand it with conversations that we've already had, that there are, in terms of, because solar energy, all of the, producing our own energy is going to be expensive in the front end in terms of investment and equipment and stuff like that. And I understand that there's potential if we pool with Brown County, the city, that we would potentially have a better chance at getting grants for that kind of stuff that we would then split among us, but at least we'd have some potential to get grants. Do you know of any other, at this point, have there been any new developments in terms of money available to help people, districts or cities and counties have the front-end money to be able to invest and/or loans that we would, we would get and then pay back or those kinds of things? I guess I'd ask you just to address that, that issue.
Yeah, definitely. And the first thing I want to say too- Um, and the first thing I wanna say too is I, I am not as well-versed in the, the technical aspects of, of clean energy and renewable energy. Um, but some of our partners uh at Sierra Club, Renew Wisconsin, they've been working with the State Treasurer's Office on a clean energy toolkit for local elected leaders that outlines exactly all the different definitions of uh clean energy, renewable energy, different sources, fleet vehicles, et cetera. So um, definitely not an expert myself on that, but um, there are resources available. And this, this toolkit would be really helpful to, to further answer those questions. Um, but to your second point, um, yes, uh, since we've uh had a change in leadership in the State Treasurer's Office in Wisconsin, um, a very uh old fund that's existed since the eighteen hundreds, uh, the, uh, the funds that are managed by the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands, basically all the interest money um that's collected from our, you know, hundreds of thousands of acres, um, has now been um opened up for uh clean energy projects and energy efficiency projects. So as this fund has existed for, you know, since the eighteen sixties, school districts, local governments can apply for um, for funds for all sorts of things. The way the uh statute is written just says for the public good. So uh now, uh with, with new leadership, uh that recognizes the uh importance of climate change, this is open for um uh school districts, cities to um have low-interest loans, really quick turnaround, um, to fund uh further energy efficient, efficiency projects or solar or whatever direction you wanna go. Um, and you know, I'm definitely of the opinion that um more and more, as more and more municipalities, local governments, uh regional, uh regional approaches develop um more, it will send a message to, to folks who do have the financial resources. And you know, it'll be a snowball effect of sorts.
Katie and then Rhonda.
Uh, to continue in uh Brenda's vein, in terms of the grants that my, or the grants or loans that might be available, is it better to uh be in a position to apply for the, the money as a group, like with city, county and school district? And then my other part, my other question is whether that improves our buying power? In terms of trying to, you know, if we're not in a position, if the technology is not there that makes the new energy affordable right now, there are still things we can do. We have, we still have buildings whose windows are, need to be replaced. And if we can do something to that effect, does that improve our buying power if we link with the city and the county? And is that something that you guys facilitate or who, who does that?
Do you wanna take that?
Um, I will try to take it my, uh, uh, I, I'll be completely honest. I actually don't personally know, but I just wrote down that question to try to see uh if I can actually follow up with you on that. My inclination would be yes, but I don't wanna say that without.
Your hope would be yes?
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna say that without knowing uh officially. I, I do like, so Seth mentioned the Board of Commissioner of Public Lands uh loan. I mean, that, that, those interest rates are really, really low, like two, three percent, right? Um, and I mentioned owned versus leased before. So you could do uh a mixture of both. I don't think it has to be a zero-sum game uh where you only are buying uh solar panels yourself. You're maintaining them yourself. Or you're only uh buying your own uh wind turbine for a, a school or anything like that. It's talking in the clean energy realm of things, not energy conservation necessarily. But um, you can have that mixed portfolio of owned, leased. Uh, and even working with Wisconsin Public Service to make sure that any uh energy shortfall falls you have on your own, that any energy you're getting from them is actually sourced from renewables or from clean energy. So uh, I will find out to the first question and then there's just some extra tidbits for you.
And I just wanna echo your support of Mike, I was actually on the board that hired Mike. Good job, Mike.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I.
To the second part of your question, I think those would be really important ongoing conversations to have about how the city and the county and neighboring communities could increase their buying power. But um, I think at, at this point, um, there would be, there would need to be a lot of dialogue that would need to be started.
Rhonda, now it's your turn.
Um, I also was really um impressed with the presentation and, cause I had no idea, obviously, but any, any of that as well. So that was really nice to, to sit through and see and hear and be um, become aware of what, what we've actually done as kind of a starting point of what, where we need to go. Um, so I had questions that were answered. Um, so you were sitting here through the first presentation and you're fully aware of, of the needs that we have. Um, that maybe this board, maybe the next board, people that are serving can determine what are priorities, what aren't priorities. Um, I agree with everything that you're saying and I recognize it all. I'm not a climate change denier. Um, I look at how this will actually happen. I love resolutions when I know that there's teeth to them and that there's something that can actually come out of it and that we can really cook with gas as far as to, to reach the goals. Um, I'm not interested in lofty, feel-good, warm, fuzzy things that don't really have any, any direction. Um, and I'm not saying that this is the case, I'm just saying this is just where I sit with this. Um, because I met with you and had discussed my concerns, just knowing what the needs are and how significant they are. And the needs aren't going away and they're only getting to be more significant. I do wonder about partnering with, you know, the, the city, the county and other, other partners. But I also wonder about if leadership change is there, right? Cause we have elections every two years um for the bodies of governance and then we have it as well for the leadership every four years. Um, and so I, I just wonder how that really, what that really looks like. Because if someone asks me, so you've signed a resolution and, and so what's gonna happen next? And just to understand what that would really look like, I don't really know. Just looking at the school board that's sitting here right now, how would we, we would do that? I don't think it's a matter of we don't agree and we don't believe it's important. I think it's, it's for me, it's how does this really work and become reality? Um, I feel like I wanna s- like be more supportive and, and cheerlead this. But there's, I have a lot of questions of how we would even make that happen. Um, you don't know any donors or anything, do you? Yeah, um, and have you met with the county?
Uh, I have been meeting with the county over the uh better part of the last year. Um, I've been meeting with county supervisors on an individual basis to discuss uh the same types of commitments and the same types of resolutions. Um, and even discussing like other types of bodies or ordinances that uh they could do. Um, that being said, they are a, a twenty-six member board. So there's a lot of different opinions floating around uh that you need to navigate. And so to answer your question, yes, I've been, been meeting with them. It is a, a goal of ours to work with the county to get them to the same uh commitment as well and make them a willing, a willing partner in this process and in the region too. So that is forthcoming. Uh, there's been progress. Seth mentioned before uh the energy audit that uh just got put into their budget uh and to replace all of their LED light bulbs. So they're on the path to do it. And that's something I'm happy to keep you up to date on and like where, where that progress is, so.
So you have these school districts that actually sign resolutions. Did you ever sit through a presentation to see what, what they've done or where they're at to know?
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, so these resolutions are very, very new. Uh, just this past year, Eclair's was only two months ago, maybe even a month and a half ago. Uh, and then Madison's was back in June. Uh, I don't know specifically what types of steps they were taking towards energy conservation before that. Um, but a, a lot of the impetus came from what other local governments around them were doing. Um, uh, but yeah, so.
And one last question. Does the organization have anyone that can be kind of a liaison to assist with ideas? Like you mentioned some things, but you know, you leave today. And is there someone that actually can work with the district on maybe where to kind of narrow down where we should start if we consider doing this?
Um, yes, absolutely. I mean, Casey and I uh can be resources to the extent of our knowledge. Uh, but like I said, uh, some of the technical stuff, uh, I have not a great grasp on. This clean energy toolkit that's uh, uh, being developed is, you know, a fifty, sixty-page manual um that really outlines that. Um, we also have uh, some of the folks that did a lot of the heavy lifting on the drafting uh are from Renew Wisconsin. Uh, and we told them about this presentation, they're incredibly excited about um, about uh all of the work happening up in, in northeast Wisconsin here. Um, and they've also said that they would be able to um help figure out um how to actually implement this and how to do this. Cause I mean, I think the first thing that you said is absolutely like if, if you're gonna pass a resolution, it needs teeth and you need to figure out how to do it. I think there's a lot of longer-term conversations that need to happen with the city, the county, other communities. Um, but uh taking that first step and figuring out how you can have that accountability is, is super important. And we can help you as much as we can. But uh, I think our biggest, you know, utility to this situation is knowing folks that can answer the, the more difficult questions. And we're committed to, to walking out of this room and, and following up tomorrow on that.
If I could add one thing to that too, NWTC and Jenny Brinker there at the Energy Innovation Center, uh, she is also really excited about a school board's interest in, in this and the city's commitment to a hundred percent clean energy. And she's actually said that she's, you know, she's always having students uh actually go out into the community and work on these types of things. So you know, there's potential partnering opportunities with NWTC for things like benchmarking. Uh, Eland Electric is, is here and they are a, a really great company that's worked with the city. They've also worked with Sisters of St. Francis uh over on the east side of the city. And uh actually installing and like uh doing all the estimates and like benchmarking as well for their solar installation on their facilities. So there, there are a lot of resources here and like Seth said, we're always happy to help and connect you to them.
I'm gonna call on myself and then I'll send it over to Laura. I have a couple of comments and then a question. So I think you're right. I think to, to do a resol- resolution without sort of having a long-term strategy around how we're going to uphold that and put teeth to it is a necessary component. And I'm thinking about, you know, our strategic framework, I'm thinking about setting our priorities, hiring the new superintendent. I mean, those are all big pieces that we have to make sure those stay top of line. Um, and then the other piece too was, as other districts are doing this, it would be great as, you know, if the state could sort of build some type of coalition or network around sharing best practices, even if it was something, you know, pretty fluid and just sort of informal where districts could get on a call and, and share, just share contacts. Um, that would always be great. And then I had a question for you, going back to your two example resolutions, Casey, that you shared. And I don't know if this gets into more semantics, cause I don't, I'm not fully versed on the language either. But the, the Madison one talked about energy efficiency and renewable energies. And then the other one also included language around renewable materials such as water recycling and composting. So when you say energy efficiency, does that include the other terms too, like water recycling, composting? Or is it good to call those out in addition to energy efficiency? Does that make sense? Okay, go ahead.
Um, I think it's probably best to be more specific and detailed in what you're trying to lay out initially, since a resolution would be your framework for all the work that follows after. Um, however, uh, Dane County is one really good example uh with their actual work plan that came as a result of uh their resolution or I believe ordinance that they had passed. That's really, really detailed and goes through everything from energy conservation to procurement to like food waste and recycling, um, kind of touching on like what Eclair had mentioned in, in their resolution uh with renewable, renewable waste as, as you mentioned. Uh, I, I think it's probably better to be specific and detailed in, in the resolution itself. But also keep in mind that later on, if you're developing a specific work plan uh through the facilities department or through a committee or, or some other uh subject matter expert, that they'll be able to think a lot of, think about a lot of those details later on, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I just wanna go on the record, I know for me, obviously the energy efficiency and renewables is, is critical. But I, I really liked the language around the renewable materials, cause I think that the water conservation, the composting, those are those, those pieces that support this larger vision, but really um can make a big impact. So I, I really appreciated the two different that you were able to give us, so thank you for that. And Laura, I'll turn it over to you.
So I think the first time we met was last summer. And I think at that time, um, I did mention to you that one of my, my biggest concern was that moving forward, that you guys won't be where you are forever, I won't be here forever. You know, like people move on and, and um, we won't have this mayor forever. You know, like the, 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 the people change, the, the players change. And so this resolution has to be um able to withstand the, the changes that will come for political reasons. So I, I'm very um concerned about that. So whatever we do as, as a board, we'll have to be able to um kind of spell out what future boards will, will, um, will have to do. Um, also, I'm kind of interested in a, a student-based component of this. Um, if we're gonna commit to this, how do, is there a way to fit this into our curriculum? Is there a way, I think of uh Weekweack School out there on the east shore of, of the bay, um, up there on a cliff. And they're already doing a lot of, uh, they're, you know, they study a lot of this already. You know, what kind of an easy win would it be to have a wind turbine out there? And what an example that would set, because if we, you know, if we're honest here, uh, Green Bay sets the, sets the pace for the districts around us, um, sets an example. And if we could have some of those highly visible um kind of uh, um, projects and, and would that set the pace for the, the next decade? Um, that, that's something I was thinking about, um. And then my, I guess my last question is, when you're out in various communities and you talk about this, can you share kind of like, what is the one concern that um citizens, taxpayers bring to you? What is the thing that they um, that there, that comes up over and over again? Is it, h- how do we, I'm assuming is how do we pay for it? But maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
I think the number one concern uh when anybody is ever talking about implementing clean energy is uh how do you uh pay for the upfront costs? Uh, because you know, in the long term, you're gonna be making your money back and you're gonna be saving in the long term. But really the, the challenge is the initial investment. Um, and I think that whatever decisions you make, that's, that's gonna have to be probably the biggest, uh, biggest question that you'll have to answer. Um, luckily, uh, as we mentioned, there are some loan opportunities that can help offset that. Um, and really, you know, making the calculation that the more and more communities that prioritize this, um, it, it shifts the market. It sends WPS a message that this is what consumers want. Um, if, you know, the, the largest city in WPS's rain uh, uh, region, um, and the school district and neighboring communities are all saying we want clean energy, the market will shift that way. Um, so there's ways around that. And you know, I really think the, the, yeah, the simple thing is how to pay for the upfront cost.
So what you just said about shifting thinking, but from the, the companies that provide, currently provide that, that energy, I think is a vital part of this. And Green Bay is the, the biggest community. So I, I wanna stick a pin in that. Like I, like this is, this is how you really change, change a community by um, by recognizing that power and that leadership potential. And, and, and then the, 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 the di- the districts or the communities around you uh watch and um hopefully get on board. So anyway, thank you.
Could, could I add something to that as well? Um, but so, yeah, I, I just wanna double down on, on what Seth said with uh cities or, cities and schools. Uh, municipalities are often the largest ratepayers in a utilities area. So yeah, making that switch and making that. So yeah, making that switch and making that commitment sends waves out through an entire region. And you, uh, River Falls actually as a city tried to leverage that power as a, as a large rate payer to, uh, work with their utility to make up for any energy shortfalls that they couldn't reach themselves. So, sorry about that.
Andrew?
Yeah, so well, um, well, I haven't had the opportunity to meet with you. I, I am a supporter and intend to vote, um, in support of the clean energy resolution and, and taking steps. I've, I've always been on record as willing to invest money upfront that'll have long-term savings in, in whatever area, clean energy being no different. I just want to be, I, I'm noticing here, it's, it seems like we've been, um, we've been at this for a, a very long time on a subject that is, that has basically unanimous agreement. So I just am wondering if there's any thing, you know, what, what happens next? And we have, you know, we have two other, we have at least two other heavy agenda items coming up. So just wondering where we're at with that.
Brenda?
So, and I know we've, we've talked about this because I agree that, that I'm not interested in signing a resolution that doesn't go anywhere. But I'm thinking that, that if we're, sorry, if we're committed as a board to making something happen, that, that step one is signing the resolution, but immediately behind that is what are our next three steps that we're going to take? And I guess the, the one step I think we need to take is, uh, somebody said it, that we need somebody in our district that's on point, that this is, that this is what they oversee and, and they're, um, the one that, that you contact. They're the ones that, um, have the information that, and can get grant feelers out and are looking for opportunities. I don't know who that person is or, but that, to me, that's, would be the first step in terms of our internal work is to decide who that person is. And then I think, I think we need then to have a, um, a group of people that work with that person, um, to, to do the work and put forth a, um, a, a two-year, a five-year, a 10-year kind of plan, whatever makes sense with that. But, um, I do think that signing, that, that that, we all have to agree that that's what we need to do or something similar to that, um, before we sign on to a resolution. Otherwise it just sits there and doesn't go anywhere. But if you're, and again, we're in the middle of a superintendent transition. But I think that this is something we as a board, um, can do. I mean, if this is important to us as a board, it should be important for our current superintendent and our next superintendent to make sure that it happens. So I don't see a problem with waiting for a new superintendent to start putting some of the pieces together. And, and the new superintendent might have new ideas, but I think just at least getting some of the wheels moving. And the wheels I've mentioned are pretty basic steps. You're in charge.
I agree with everything you're saying. And I wonder though, if we can really make a designation of who's responsible until after we have agreed upon what's in the actual resolution. Because if you just look between the two, there's different pieces that we can pull in, right? So I think first we have to figure out what we're actually agreeing to and what, how broad or not broad it's going to be. So can we make a to, I mean, what have you done in the past in terms of drafting a resolution?
Well, I'm thinking that you, you both can help us. We can look at, um, this. I don't know. I mean, I'm happy to be the point person to, to put it together. And if any of the board members have, um, or anybody for that matter, have specific suggestions of what they'd like to see in it. And I would like to have somehow have some sort of teeth in it to say, and we will do X, Y, and Z within the first year or two or something like that. Um, but I'm happy to work on that with, with Seth and Casey, anybody else? If Laura and I have been communicating with you, um, and, but anybody else that's interested. And then, um, and alongside of you or somebody you wanted designate to just sort of work on wording? And I think bringing it to our, well, it depends how quickly we want to do. We could bring it to February's meeting and then vote on it, uh, the work session in February and vote on it in February. The end, um, at a regular board meeting, um, if you think we can do it that. I mean, otherwise we could bring a rough draft in two weeks and then bring it to the work session and then vote on it in February, depending on how quickly people want to move. Or if you want to go slow, we could do it in March. I mean, I'm just, um, it's up to, I guess it's up to the board as to.
Michelle?
When we're ready.
Thank you. Um, as I've listened and we've talked about this a fair number of times. I think that it's really important that we would have an overall sense of the operations. And, um, I know that Pete Ross is, is new to the district, but has a strong commitment in this area and could work in partnership with the facilities department and with all of you, um, to have that conversation. What I'd like to do and propose is if we could set up a meeting, Sandy, with those interested, um, in the near future and then really take a deeper dive and look at the resolution possibilities and then come back with, you know, a proposal. Um, I, the commitment is really important and I understand that, um, you know, it has to be in a place and space and obviously facilities is, is a key space, um, at least for at least one strong part of it in the operations piece. When you get to, um, the, the other pieces that you were talking about Christina, um, maybe in a little bit different place. But I, that's a starting point and I know that, um, I know that Pete would be willing to support that in partnership with Mike, obviously, and his team. I know that Kale has done some work in this area and others as well. So I think let's just take a look at what's there and, and give it a go and, um, set up a meeting and board members interested in joining. And Seth and Casey are nodding and Mike, I don't know if you're in, but he's smiling. And so, and Pete. So I think we, we can go on this and at least give it a go.
So if board members are interested, so who's want to let her know now or email? Anybody?
Either way.
I would like to be involved. Okay. If you decide that you want to, reach out to Sandy.
And then we can do stuff virtually too.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Thanks for being patient. Thank you. All right. Next we have the human resources discussion item and opportunity for public comment.
Do we want to take a break?
We're going to talk wellness tonight. I'm going to say Melissa's thunder really fast. If you feel like you've been sitting too long.
Ooh, can I get up?
Well, it's not, it's not up to you. It's up to the board. I think we should, but it's a board's decision.
Yeah, just take a couple of minutes.
All right. So a few minute break.
Thank you.
I get it. I get it. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to apologize. Yeah, she chose it. I mean, it would be to, to suggest we take a recess or not, would be a little wine, but to stand up. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are two things being talked about at the same time. So.
They did? They did?
Thank you. Yes. I, um.
Talking to me was that fun for me?
Yeah, I would like to be involved in some of that, not because I have any specific, but I.
Might be late, but before we leave tonight, could we set a time to meet to talk about interview questions or if you have any?
Sure. I, I guess, I mean.
With the recycling and the composting. So I don't know. Give it some thought. But I was just trying to figure out how we can, because I think to your point about grants. If the resolution connects to some of our existing policy, it just gives it another little place for the strength.
Great, great.
How was your, um, holiday in July?
How long were you in LA?
Um, three days.
Oh, quick.
Yeah, it was just quick. We rolled and went up to Pasadena.
Kind of fun? It was okay.
What was it? Hey, do you have a chill in your nails?
I do, yeah.
I got, did you get it at the holidays?
Hello, Miss Katie.
I don't usually wear either, but I got.
Yeah, we ready?
Okay, everybody, are we ready?
Hey, Christina?
Yes?
Um, I just want to say, I want to apologize to Bev. I, I misunderstood. Bev was just saying, hey, I'm, when I'm speaking, feel free to stand up if you need to stretch, which is encouraged and, and everything. And I, I confused that with, at the same time, people talking about whether to take a, a formal break, which of course is the board's decision. But, um, we like speakers to say, stand up and stretch if you need to, because we will anyways if we need to. So that's, that's good. So sorry about that.
Thanks, Andrew. All right. We'll turn it over to you all.
So thank you. Um, tonight I'm joined again by Cindy Van Aston and Beck Krasinski from M3 who are going, are back. Um, we were here in November giving you an update on the more traditional parts of our benefit plan, our health and dental, um, insurance. And now we're going to talk more about the wellness sort of features. And I believe those were some of the questions that we received the last time. So we're back with that update. And again, this is all leading up to, uh, when we come March second with our rate renewals that we're going to ask you to certify for 2020, 2021. So I'll turn it over to Beck and Cindy.
Good evening. We have a packet that we handed out in front of you when we were here in November. We talked to you about the top initiatives that we were working on with the district and we'd like to give you some updates on that. We continue to meet with the Benefit Advisory Committee. We had another meeting with them December 17th. At that meeting, we brought in the National Cooperative Pharmacy Benefit Manager to share with the committee, uh, how the plan performed in the, um, 2018, 19 plan year and the pharmacy landscape, um, that they're seeing in the geographic area, as well as provided them some information on telehealth and virtual visits. The telehealth and virtual visit, uh, information we shared was on Teladoc as well as what the local provider systems offer. We asked them to look at the information and bring it back to their colleagues and provide feedback. We have a follow-up meeting, uh, scheduled for February 18th with the Benefit Advisory Committee where we'll be looking for their feedback, uh, and questions that they may have on telehealth and thoughts and considerations if that's a right plan fit for another access opportunity into healthcare. We'll say the Benefit Advisory Committee was well-attended and following the October meeting, we got a lot of feedback on the vendor fair that had happened in November and a lot of feedback on learning information about the benefits they hadn't known before. One example from one of the members who came into the first meeting in October, thinking that the district didn't have great benefits. And after that meeting and after some exposure into the plan, came back to the December meeting, thinking that the benefits were outstanding. So it's, it's been a good, uh, feedback two ways in learning, uh, from the committee, things that they don't really understand about the benefits and discussion about how we can bring that forward for the rest of the member population.
All right. The third initiative that we chose to highlight with the board during our presentations this year is the dependent eligibility verification process that began on December 2nd and continues through the end of January. What you see in the presentation is that, um, as of December 30th, 65% of the staff had completed sta- step one of that process. As of this past Friday, January 3rd, we're at 75% and right on track with other groups who have gone through the similar process. As of December 30th, 45% had fully completed and as of Friday, we're at 51%. So we're making very good progress with about four weeks left to go from that last recent received report. Um, again, this allows us to ensure fidelity to the plan design and the intent that the folks who you intend to have benefits offered by the district are utilizing those benefits and are eligible to do so. Um, we receive a weekly status update that's provided to your human resources team here in the district as well as to M3 staff. And we review that to make sure that we're staying on track and on progress. Staff will be receiving additional communications for those folks who have not yet completed the process. Those come by way of email, letters to home, um, and phone calls that are completed by Impact Interactive, um, as well as some outreach by your human resources department. And there are open lab hours that human resources offering to make sure that staff have ample opportunity to complete that process by the deadline.
Backside of that. The backside of that document is, um, again, an outline of the near site services that we implemented earlier in 2019. In March, we implemented the near site access clinics to Bellin and mid-July, we, um, opened it up and offered Privea. The sheet behind that is a dashboard of summary of how those, uh, utilization is going thus far. If you look at that spreadsheet in the top left corner where it says. If you look at that spreadsheet in the top-left corner, where it says 2019-2020 near-site utilization, you'll see the, a graph show July, August, September, and October. The total spend for those services, which is a, a direct bill to the district, is showing, uh, what was physical therapy. The lime-green middle section is urgent care, and then the darker green is the primary care visits. Currently, the urgent care services are only offered through Pervaya's urgent care. So we continue to see a nice, uh, trend upward of utilization. This is one of those benefits that coming out of the Benefit Advisory Committee. Really great feedback from members who have personally used it, and had colleagues who were not aware of the services, could share the services, and also provided feedback on their access into those services. We also provide, through the district, personal health assessments. In 2019-2020 plan year, you'll see there were 2,366 employees who participated in the health assessment, 880 spouses compared to the, um, participation in the 2018-19 plan year. The average score went from 80 in 1890 to 78, and the Helix National Average Score also changed, uh, 76 down to 75. What we're actually seeing is a change in some of our newer, younger workforce are coming in less healthy, more stagnant and less movement. So nationally, Helix is seeing their scores in the younger population actually drop lower. With those health risk assessments, the top five risk factors that are identified are nicotine, weight, blood pressure, glucose, and the triglycerides. The points that you see there identify the maximum number of points to be earned in those categories, and then the points that were earned as a district average in each of the two plan years, the 1819 and 1920 plan year. The outreach letters come directly from Bellin, and based on a member's results, they may get an outreach letter for nicotine, mo- moderate cardiac issues, or high cardiac issues. Along with those outreach letters, members are, uh, offered additional coaching and/or services. One of those services is the calcium screening offered to Bellin and/or Pervaya. Those screening is a, a heart-stress calcium score. They are a $50 fee, and when they are indicated through their, uh, health assessment that they may have risk, they're offered those scorings at no cost. So you'll see in the 2019-2020 plan year, there were 517, um, members offered that, 48 who actually took advantage of that in 2018-19, 258, and no one took advantage of that. The, the great difference here between the 258 and 1819 and the 517 outreach and offer of calcium scorings per year is really a, uh, evaluation change in how Bellin was evaluating the risk scores, and started sending them out to a larger mass population, so more people have had the opportunity.
Another piece that we use to evaluate employee health is workers' compensation. So workers' compensation, um, are claims that are made when someone gets injured while they're in the course of their regular work duties. Because that touches health, we wanted to make sure that that was reflected on this wellness summary. So you'll see in the 2018-19 plan year, we're comparing 1819 to 1718. The plan year runs different, um, than in workers' compensation than it does in your health plan. So we are comparing one year to the last year, it's just a little bit different than in the health plan. Um, you'll see that your total premium spend was reduced over those two years, and this year, we did see an increase in claims. Your top five conditions, three of those appear in both the 2017-18 plan year and 1819, strains, contusions, and sprains. Um, again, those look rather similar to the musculoskeletal being the top health plan diagnostic category, and for your reference, we did include the population health summary, that's the next page in your packet. That is the summary that we provided to you in November. So in the bottom-left-hand cate- or, bottom-left-hand corner of that November summary that we provided, you see musculoskeletal listed there, and we're seeing that, um, transition over into workers' comp injuries as well. You'll also see that the top five provider systems for workers' compensation on the new dashboard are very similar to those in the, uh, health plan summary, which is in the center bottom of the summary provided in November. You do see some addition of some orthopedic, um, care or radiology in the workers' comp summary, as would be expected when you're diagnosing more of those musculoskeletal, um, type of injuries. The next piece under workers' compensation deals with absence hours. These are absences that are strictly due to workers' compensation injuries, so when folks are not only injured at work, but then caused to not be present at work. Uh, so you do see an increase in workers' comp absence hours from 1718 to 1819, which again, given that the claims have increased, that's not unexpected that the absence hours would also increase. So this is why we like to look at that overall focus on health, whether it's workers' compensation, wellness, our health plan, it all touches health, it impacts our employees, and impacts their ability to, to affect student learning in a positive way. Moving down further, in the chart, you see information about our EAP program, the Employee Assistance Program, which is administered through the Employee Resource Center out of Northeast Wisconsin here. The Green Bay Area Public School District has a utilization rate of 11.6% compared to a national average of 3.6%. Um, we're really excited about that rate, that means folks are able to access care that they need, and that they're taking advantages of the great benefits that you're offering here as a district. Through that, 553 unique clients were served. That could be employees, or it could be family members of employees, because your plan is open to both employees and, um, their immediate family. Then the last piece of information on the chart shows, um, the top five reasons why folks are utilizing EAP services within the Green Bay Area Public School District, as well as those national averages. And you see that those conditions are relatively similar between those two lists, they just appear in a different order.
So the two dashboards, uh, really are, uh, a glimpse or a highlight to indicate the areas that we continue to watch and try to integrate all of the products and services that are offered, and how we look to partner with the medical community in servicing the member population. The last document in your packet walks through the health plan performance through November, so July 1 through November 30th, 2019. And I won't reiterate all of these, I know you're familiar with the document, but in the left column, where it says all combined, we're looking at the enrollment by single spouse, children, and family enrollment. The total plan cost through November was 17,868, our projected plan cost of 19,930. The projected plan costs are based on the rate equivalents that we have in place, both the employer portion, as well as the employees' portion, being, making the difference of 2,62, or just over $2 million. We also are showing in here the cost for the Pervaya direct services, and while we're showing a direct cost here of $134,000 on a direct basis, had that run through the health plan, it would have been double that 134,000. So the funding loss ratio through November is at 90%. When we were here in November, and we showed you the information through October, we were at a 92% loss ratio. So the plan is continuing to perform through the first, uh, four months, five months of the plan year. Last year, in comparison, July through November, the plan was at a 106% loss ratio, and when we were here in November, uh, to date, the plan was at 109% a year ago. So the plan continues to perform from a medical standpoint. On the far-right side is dental, showing you the enrollment in dental, both from a single and a family enrollment, the plan costs through November versus the projected costs, and the, uh, plan for dental is performing at 109% loss ratio, which is really the same loss ratio it was performing at in Oct- or November. We expect the dental will actually level out, as we know services are higher on the dental plan in that August-September timeframe. So we'll start to, um, breathe for a moment and ask if you have any questions that we can answer.
Laura?
I don't really have any questions, but I do find these updates really, really helpful. Like, um, this is such a complicated subject matter, um, if you don't live this every day, if you don't work in this industry, you know, you, you stru- people struggle to understand it, so this is, um, like, this is just fantastic for me individually, so, thank you very much.
I was gonna say the same thing, and I, like, the graphics that you use, it's nice to have a, like, a repetitive update, and it's easy to understand, and it gives us a, an understanding of the scope of the work, so thank you for this.
Thank you. Our, our intention is, between these two dashboards, that we will continue to update these two dashboards. We won't bring you new, uh, dashboards, and so we'll be able to really, uh, measure and benchmark the success of the programs. Thank you.
Brenda?
I'm, I'm curious, because I'm looking at the retirees, at, uh, 171 loss ratio. Is that typical of, of that group in lots of different plans? Are they more difficult to, to predict, um, usage, or what, why does that number? And is that an outlier, or does it always tend to trend higher than the, um, than our regular staff?
It is typical that the retiree population may trend higher. Uh, the reason that we see it here at 171% is the way we have done the rating in the past years. We have, um, kept the retiree increases of their plan utilization equal to your actives. So at some point, it, uh, throws the balance off in that scenario.
Okay. Michelle?
I want to, um, thank Melissa and Jennifer and the team, um, who work with this team, um, from M3 and the, the Advisory Committee. It's been, um, you're working all the time, and I think that it's, it certainly shows, but this is probably, when I look at, we talked briefly today about the eligibility, and how many people have already signed up, and the opportunity that people have come forward and are, are signing up, and, and we've taken quite a few who, who have self-identified off as well, that weren't necessarily eligible. So I think that as we move forward, I think this is a, a really important, uh, body of work, and it's, it's very impressive to see not only the improvements, but the expansion of opportunities. And I know when we even started this endeavor and talked about the wellness pieces, that was a really important, um, I would say, step in priority for, for the, the, who we went along with and, and are walking with and for, so thank you for that. And again, kudos to the, to the district team and, and, and you guys, it's, it's a, it's a very, very good, uh, connecting team, I think, and it works well for each of us, so thank you for that, and our, thank you from our employees, I think, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for staying all night with us.
We can show the rest of the evening.
Do you want to announce the next topic, Christina?
Yeah, it was all under one header, so thank you, Melissa. So the next, uh, topic is the individual contract language. Do you want to roll that right into the employee handbook changes, too, and just do both of them? Yep, okay.
I believe it was two years ago, um, the board voted to change the way that insurance covered, applied, insurance coverage applied to employees over the summer months based on when employees resigned. And the purpose that Human Resources had brought that forward, um, two years ago, was because we were having employees who were resigning late in the summer, and who were, um, the la- as you know, the later employees resign in the summer, the harder it is to fill positions, especially those hard-to-fill positions where there aren't as many applicants. So the language was changed where, uh, insurance would not be continuous for the entire summer months. So based on when you resigned, you may not have insurance in July or August. What we found, based on the way that the language read and was implied, and was applied, was that there was a reverse incentive to resign, and causing employees to resign even later into August than what we had hoped. And that was an unintended consequence of that language. In addition, um, some employees, or former employees, and people who were resigning, came forward with some very valid concerns about not having that insurance coverage for the duration of the summer months. So Dr. Warren actually asked us to look at this, and to see if there could be a solution going forward as to how to provide that insurance coverage, but still balance, um, encouraging those early resignations during the summer months. So we looked at it creatively, and, um, looked across the state and into, for other solutions, and we, what we came up with is, um, a different approach to liquidated damages that, um, we met with the GBA, and they, um, reviewed the language as well, and we think it's a win-win for everybody, because the way that we are now structuring liquidated damages is to offer an incentive to resign earlier in June, and I'm sorry, in July and August, and not wait until the start of the school year, by making the liquidated damages a percentage of the employees', um, wages. And so currently, liquidated damages are structured in a flat amount of $1,000, regardless of when the employee resigns after that July 1st deadline. This will allow for employees who are on the front end of the salary schedule versus the back end of the salary schedule to let that liquidated damages be more reflective of the wages they're earning. And again, also responsive to the district's needs and the cost of filling those positions as we get later into the summer. So we're able to provide the insurance over the summer months, but still provide that incentive to be able to resign earlier. The language also includes, um, waiver of the liquidated damages, and provides an ability for Human Resources to waive those liquidated damages in certain circumstance. And Terry has, um, done a really nice job in equitably applying that, that language, but this also just clarifies that she has that discretion in similar-type circumstances, not just the ones that are currently listed to waive those damages.
Thank, thank you for your work on this.
I am, I know that last Friday afternoon at 4:00, there was a meeting with the, with the union to talk it through as well, and they were very supportive of that, and so Melissa and Terry set that up.
Rhonda?
So that's my question, you said you were able to come together and put something that, I guess ba- the word balance was used. So was there any other, was there anything that they brought up that was concerning?
The feedback overall was, um, that it was a win-win, and I would say that, um, my takeaway from the meeting was it was all very positive. Uh, some of the feedback related to creating equity and, um, allowing, um, looking at the top of the scale and what that looks like relative to, would this cost anyone more money by doing the percentage? And it overall is considerably much less, um, especially during the July and August timeframe, when the percentages are, are a little bit lower. But it did, they did specifically comment around the appreciation for looking at an equitable way to apply the liquidated damages.
Thank you, um, Melissa, do you want to go on to the employee handbook?
Yep.
So then to reflect the changes in the, um, individual contracts, and then the change, um, with respect to the insurance coverage, the language in the handbook will need to be updated, and so that is just the language that we're bringing forward to reflect those changes. Anyone have anything?
Anyone have anything, questions? This looks really good, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, we have setting future agendas, so does anyone have anything you'd want to discuss or bring up?
Can you remind me again of when the Wellness Policy Conversation Committee, when that's coming back?
That is the first meeting in February, right? So, February 4th? Yep. The wellness, who will be with the, the third? Yeah, the third, so will that be Lynette, and, and you, Vicky, for that presentation? Yeah, okay.
I had mentioned that this last meeting, um, just reviewing the, the procedure that's in place with our SROs, when there is a student in their site that may have a weapon, and what the protocol is in regards to addressing that, um, because I continue to have questions about that officer who shot the student, and I'm just wondering why they didn't use a taser, I just don't know why that happened, so, um, just hoping that we can have a conversation publicly about that, of what the process is and the protocol in place is in our schools.
January 20th, that will happen, okay, thanks, Vicky. All right, anyone else, other agenda items?
I feel like we have a pretty packed January.
I know, right? All right, well, do I say that concludes our organizational support work session?
You do.
Yes.
And we said, thank God, no.
I like being in charge.
I, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting, please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format, and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.